Always.
Yeah.
That's why I cut this audio stream, so.
When is their homecoming?
Next weekend.
Next weekend.
My nephew is getting married in Minnesota on Saturday, so.
Oh, boy.
This weekend is kind of busy. I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's why I wouldn't be at the homecoming dance anyway, but.
Right.
Um, yeah.
Right.
Good evening, board. I'm excited to present to you. These are our October High Five winners, and they're going to come up one at a time and introduce themselves to you. So Charlotte, you want to start?
My name is Charlotte. I'm in 1st grade.
Charlotte, and now you get to hear all the wonderful things that your teacher shared with you. So are you ready to hear these things? All right. So Charlotte, this was from Mrs. Overly. You know who she is, right? Yeah, okay. Charlotte is an incredibly kind, respectful, and compassionate first grader. Every day, she comes to school ready to learn and ready to try her best. Charlotte goes above and beyond in showing care and empathy towards her classmates. She truly shines as a positive model and leader, inspiring everyone around her. We are so proud of you, Charlotte. Keep shining bright at Chesapeake Elementary. Congratulations.
My name is Macy. I'm in 3rd grade, and I go to Conley Elementary.
All right, Macy, and this is what Mrs. Rollins had to say. Oh, this is Mrs. Barr. This one might be, um, can we double check on that one? Do you have, Macy, are you in music with Mrs. Rollins?
Yes.
Okay. Want to make sure we have the right one on here because the grade said 4th grade. We want to make sure the right thing. Macy is a kind, hardworking student who brings positivity to music class each and every day. As a skilled communicator, she expresses herself with confidence through singing and dancing, listening with empathy to peers, and helps create a supportive classroom environment. You're also a critical thinker, approaching new, proactive singing and concert preparation with creativity, perseverance, and are willing to take risks. Your enthusiasm and joy for performing inspires classmates and reflects what it means to be of a portrait of a learner. Congratulations, Macy.
Hello, my name is John, and I'm in 2nd grade.
John, I used to see you all the time in Mrs. Goldstein's class, and now you're in 2nd grade. Do you want to hear what Mrs. Landriska had to say about you? John is always happy and very kind to his classmates, and is very hard worker. John is extremely polite, always saying please and thank you, and he never says no when a classmate asks to be his partner or asks him to play. He can always be counted on to clean up the classroom, even if he wasn't the one to make the mess or leave the supplies out. John does a great job of
Please, you're welcome to come closer.
Anybody look up here real quick, okay? Look at me first, and then... Karen, thank you so much for bringing them tonight and sharing them with us every day.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I was looking, I go, why is he in the picture?
No, I'm sorry, I did not, this was not for me. You have already done it. I'm ready to move. Alright, the next item on our agenda, number three, is public comments, are there any people in the bin? Yeah. Okay. Next item is item four, revision and adoption of the agenda, are there any revisions or adoptions to mention here? Alright, I do have one. Actually, it is to move item 12 to, towards the beginning, make that the next item on the agenda. Our student representatives are here and I'd like to recognize them towards the top of our agenda for the evening, so I'd like to move that up to space between item four and item five. Second. Are there any additions, any additional corrections or modifications? Alright, with that, I move the agenda being adopted with the change of moving item 12 just ahead of item five. Second. Question from Mr. Bobby. Voice call vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion passes at zero. That will move to... Ballot out one, student advisory representatives. I have Emma Worris and Nico.
Kanishu.
I'm gonna mess this up every single time I show.
You'll get it.
I have some practice. Kanishu? Okay, I'm gonna get better at this. Please step forward. For those that are not familiar, board has adopted two student representatives to serve in an advisory capacity, and students applied for this role and were interviewed. There were a total of seven candidates that board members interviewed. It was a very hard decision. It was a very lengthy discussion, as I've mentioned to them, all the representatives that applied were outstanding. And in the end, these were the two people that panel selected, so I congratulate you both. And are there anything else that you'd like to add?
Well, now, it's a little different, right? We don't have to have you do an office of office and all of those things, however, what I would like you, if you wouldn't mind, just for those who are not able to be at the interview and for our audience, to introduce yourselves and just maybe share, there'll be lots of opportunities in all of our board meetings for you to have input in all the things about the work that we do here. But Sharon, what is it that you're most excited about as you step into this endeavor? And after that, we will do a little... Place over there, your nameplate's all here, and officially welcome you to the board. So, Tom, you wanna go first?
My name is Emma.
Oh, you just, is it...
Tap it.
Here you go.
My name is Emma, I'm a junior at Conley, and I'm just really excited to work with the board, just to have a voice for all students in the district.
Hello, board, my name is Nico Kanishu, I'm the senior representative, I also serve as our student body and council president over at HHS, and I'm really excited to help build a longstanding structure of student voice and set up a position that has, I think, really been a long time coming, and I'm really looking forward to helping represent all students from ECC all the way to our light program, and helping ensure that all students always is at this position.
Thanks, both have a seat on over there. We're gonna get some pictures at the end with all of the board and everybody, your official spots over there. One of the other things that I just would really like to applaud the board for, taking this more from just a vision and bringing it to reality, if we look at our logo, Conley was established, the school district, in 1920. And lots of times, we've had students recognized, we've had times where we've had students who have given presentations, but to actually now take this step to having students who will be representing the entire student body, ECC, all the way through, through a variety of presentations, gathering feedback, is a pretty big step, and it's, you're making history tonight, the two of you. And again, I applaud the board for, really, we talked about it for a few years, but for this to come to fruition, really shows how much the student voice is valued by the administration and the board that is sitting up here. And so, as we've talked in the interviews and things like that, will be a work in progress that will continue to go through, but both of you have an awesome opportunity to help make this position truly what the community needs right now in the students. So, thank you guys very much, and welcome.
Alright, welcome again, as I said many times, but welcome. Next item, protocols for student advisory representatives. I thought this would be a good item to add, now that we have official student representatives, to have a discussion about what kind of protocols we should be adding, just so that we are including our students in that conversation part of it. I was wondering about a mentorship program or some kind of a contact program, so that interactions don't feel like they have the weight of an entire board of education reaching out to them constantly. Just wanted to find some kind of middle ground and have that conversation on what kind of expectations we can set going forward.
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for that, I think that we could do it a couple different ways. We have two students, we could go ahead and assign a mentor from the seven of you, we could also do where we have two. We have to be a little cautious on making sure it's not two individuals necessarily from the same committee, so it would be a violation of Open Meeting Act, but that way it could be, we have boards who've been on for a little while, as well as some new board members. And so, that could be, you know, a good perspective as well, so kinda really opening it up to you as to what thoughts are. And more of that ins and outs. One of the other things, Mr. Troy, if it's okay, when we talk about, we didn't want students, the two of you, to feel that so many people, right, eight different people are gonna reach out to you. I think one of the parts of our protocol, we wanna make sure, is that if we do have questions, things will come up throughout the meeting, where it might be a natural that we would want a student voice, but if we truly wanted that representative student feedback and student voice, is that we're gonna need to make sure that we give you ample time to prepare and get that feedback. And so, if there's a topic coming up, that would be something that could come through the mentor, it could come through regular meetings that I would have with you to say, this is something that we have on the horizon, the board would like some feedback, and we could talk about different ways of being able to get that. The two of you are both at the high school, so there's gonna be some awesome opportunities to get high school feedback, but we also wanna make sure that we're getting feedback that represents the other buildings as well. And so, whether that mentor, I would think, would be someone to kind of, the ins and outs of what happens at the board, asking questions on that. But in terms of, if we would like that feedback, I think we need to have a protocol or a mechanism, whether that would come through one specific person up here, myself, what are your thoughts on that? So then again, not bombarded by eight different people asking different questions.
And that's one of the reasons that I wanted to bring this up, because from a bombardment, for lack of a better term, standpoint, but you're right, having agenda items that we know are coming out, that would be good to have student feedback, and starting to put some of those pieces together in advance of the meeting is important to, so that it's not just the two of you that are providing the feedback, but you have an opportunity to get a wider swath of information for peers. That is also important. I do like the idea of a mentor program, and certainly if there's questions that do pop up, because of the way that we do things and the different rules and laws that we do follow and have to maintain, you are welcome to ask those questions of any of us, I would expect, but certainly of me, absolutely. But you have an understanding of not only why we do, or what we do, but also the why. Sometimes the whys aren't very obvious, if we still have to follow certain protocols and... But you're welcome to ask at any time. That, I'll open it up, they may get a bit of time to report.
I just had a quick question, Mr. Troy and Ms. Rollins. With our student board members, how do they fit in with regard to a lot? So, if one of us is having a conversation with both of them today, are they exempt? Because it's not a meet, you know, like, weekend conversation, I do wanna clarify that.
So, we did a lot of looking into the component with that, since they're not a voting member, their input and their voice is extremely important, but it's in that advisory representative role, so it would not be a violation of that, to have that conversation, because it is, again, getting that feedback. And, you know, one of the things I would recommend is that the two of you would meet with me monthly, and I would recommend that, at each of those, that an opportunity, we could do the president and superintendent meeting with you on a monthly basis, or we could rotate it, I think that would give you an opportunity to hear the voice and get to know the other board members. That would be my recommendation, that when we have that monthly meeting, to kind of look ahead at the agenda, talk about what would be important information, because you will have an agenda item, it'll be a student report, we'll talk about those things, and that will be on the standing agenda. But I do think that having that meeting and having one of you on a rotating basis is part of that, again, gives a different perspective, it gets that relationship building between each of you and them as well. So, thoughts on that?
Yeah, to answer your question, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't answer it. Regarding the Open Meeting Act, bombard is correct, really the concern is, if there's conversation with two board members who serve on the same committee, that's really where it's most problematic, because the majority or the quorum is two people.
Correct.
So, that's where care needs to be given, and I think the most, but otherwise, they serve in an advisory capacity and...
I understood about the committees and having that, but I just wanted to make sure that we were good to have, you know, even if we're, like, not being on the same committee, having that conversation, that all of a sudden, we don't, we're not violating that. So it's good for clarification just for, we're all learning, as we go here.
Correct.
No, I'm good with one serving as a mentor, as well as, I think what's important for both our new student board members, is that they do have a certified point person that they can reach out to, versus trying to figure out, how do I field this? Whether it be Mr. Troy for all things, or if we want to divvy up and have Mr. Troy assign two people, but are not part of the same committee, to each student, I'm open to that. The other piece too, I was curious about, is, I'm not gonna put our two board members on the spot, is, do they have any particular interest in any of the committees? And maybe that might help decide, like, if they have a specific interest in finance, if they have a specific interest in HR-related matters, then maybe that chair is their point person, if they had that interest in the specific areas.
That was gonna be my suggestion, as well as something along those lines. I like the idea of the monthly meeting with Jessica and Mr. Troy. You know, I think part of this is the idea that we're building this plane as we're flying it, right? So, we're all kind of working through this, and this is a very new, exciting thing, but I also like the structure of, you know, if there are, the structure of the mentorship program, but also the structure of the committees, right? So that if there was a specific question that might fall under one of the committees, that'd kind of be shared with the student board members, and then that be their point person for that question.
And I think it's also important to look at this as a two-way street.
Absolutely.
Because if there is, it's not just what the board members want, I think you're open up for everybody else, and I don't intend to, but to me, this is a two-way conversation or a two-way build. If there's something that you have as a vision and would like to see this roll into, I'm open to that, I would love to hear about that too. I don't wanna make an imposition, say, this is our vision, this is what we need, I look at this as a two-way street, as a two-way dialogue. But we are open to that, I am open to that kind of conversation at all times. And if there's something that occurs in the middle of your time in service, it doesn't have to be today, it could be in six months, the situation comes up, say, oh, I'd really like to have an input on something, great, I'm all for it. And to Mr. Beckney's point, yes, we are, we are building the plane as we're flying it, so I ask for some grace as we kind of put this construct together and...
I think for tonight, that puts us in a really good spot, but I think we need to continue to revisit this conversation as we learn what this looks like.
We know the protocols are living, breathing documents, they will constantly change, so in the short term, as we're going, are we all okay if there are requests for them, that you have filtered those to me, and then I would reach out, and as we, you know, continue to build that relationship and flesh out what this looks like and how, because I think it's gonna be important to have that conversation with all of you, but in the next couple of months, as we're doing these next few meetings, would that be an okay protocol of reach out to me and I'll get the questions and the tests out there, and that way you don't have nine people reaching out all at once, seriously. Perfect, thank you, Mark.
Anything else?
Just a quick question, I mean, this probably won't have an answer tonight, but just for FYI, there is a student board member workshop, could there be an opportunity for them to attend? Is that even a possibility? I don't know if it's on Friday or Saturday, I couldn't remember the date when I looked at it, but there is a workshop for student board members.
That would be up to all of you and their parents.
If that is something... And, you know, something, how we can get the, especially because this is so new, and to have that, and they can then bring back what other schools and other student representatives are doing, and really help us to get, and it's coming up so quickly that as we're starting, that I think we'll be, like, still fresh enough in this process, where that feedback could be valuable. But again, of course, parents and board, would the board be open and looking into that opportunity for them? I think it's a question I have.
I'm with yes.
I would say yes, I'd like to get some more information about when, where, I mean, we know the where, when that's occurring and what that looks like.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll pull back to see, what is that session, is it an all-day session, is it a variety of different sessions, and pull that together, and it would be, it sounds like a field trip and what that would look like, but we can absolutely bring some information up with that as part of my superintendent report in two weeks with that, so that we can get information to them and speak with their parents as well, so, okay.
And I've said this stuff many times, and I'll repeat, say it again, your job is to help students, to be students, participate in student activities, everything that you do and normally do. To be students, participate in student activities, everything that you do and normally do, I don't want this to interfere with your students' life. I appreciate your service, I'm grateful for your service. Like you have homework to do, you have projects to take care of, you have all sorts of things at the school and that is, to me, is paramount in your role, to help these students.
Agreed.
Again, congratulations, Lombard. All right, if I have other protocols or anything else to add to that? Right, not hearing anything, moving on, I have 12 dot three minutes have been prepared and presented in the board packet for review and we'll be bringing these up for vote on the next meeting in two weeks, right? Okay. There's no objections, I'd like to move these forward then, we'll vote next meeting.
I believe that there was some conversation about removing an item from minutes. Was there a resolution to that conversation?
No, I don't believe there was.
Okay.
Removing from minutes, the actual wording of the minutes?
Removing, I need to find more information.
Because I think right now this would be the wording of any minutes that were in the actual minutes for what's on the agenda, correct?
Yeah, it's just the content of the minutes that were presented.
Okay.
Moving ahead, coming back to the original part of the agenda item, we'll still call it five, the curriculum instruction committee, and Mr. Beckney, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so we have a couple of things to share from the curriculum. Instruction committee, some new courses, or course proposals for the high school, EAB contract and graduation venue. I'll turn it over to Dr. McCrendle.
Good evening, board and student advisory members. Tonight, our first item is our new course proposal for the 2026 to 2027 school year. On an annual basis, we do present any new courses to our catalogs to the board to be able to approve at the next board meeting, that we can add those to our current catalog offering we have for students. And so tonight, we have four different courses for you. I do want to make sure to say that when we add a course to our course catalog, it does not mean that it definitely will run, it just means that we could consider it because there's a lot of things that go into running a course, including student enrollment and also just staff that they are interested in teaching it, how that kind of works out with our staffing pieces. So we're excited about these four courses that we have for you. The first one is dual credit French four. Last year, we approved dual credit French three and it replaced just a normal French three class. And what this allows is college level credit for students who choose to go through our form language pathway with French. And so it's the final option that we would be having and we do have an instructor who currently is teaching French three dual credit and can teach French four dual credit. And so we're excited to have that for you this evening. The next one is one we're very excited about, it's a dual credit basic nursing assistance class. We've been working on this for a couple of years and along with Ms. St. Clair over at the high school. We currently have students in our basic nursing assistance class, but they are traveling over to MCC, which means that they are giving up a period to travel and then come back and take, and take that course. And so it loses, they lose some chances in their schedule to take more courses. And so we are wanting to bring this internally. We still have some work to do in regards to staffing and making sure we have the appropriate staff member to teach this with the right certification, but we do have a good plan with the, with our partnership with MCC. In order to add a dual credit class into our catalog, we do have to get approval from MCC as well. So both of these courses, we plan to submit to their, their where they're wanting to do it and that they have to approve it as well. So as long as they approve it and you approve it, then we can have it as an option. And so we're very excited about this course and this offering for our students. We're hoping to start with one section at each semester. It does take up two and class periods for this because there's a basic, base part of learning as well as some clinical hours connected to it. And so with your approval in a couple of weeks, we would continue to build out that process and take a look at our staffing and try to locate a staffing group that we can actually teach this. The third option we have is a new AP course that they're offering called Business Principles and Personal Finance. It's a year-long option for students, it gives AP credit and options within our finance area. And currently, we have a couple semester-long courses, but this allows students to study for a full year and get more in depth on that area if that's something that was interesting to them. And of course, we're excited when we can attach an AP option to students to allow them to get a light up when they're going on to their next steps after high school. And then the final course came from students, it's a big one that has been being asked for, the name is TETER. It's publication production, sports broadcasting. And so it is an entire course where students will learn about the fundamentals of sports broadcasting, learn how, what the speaking parts of that are, learning how to develop the skills of mixing different, you know, different videos together, having those conversations and just learning those skills and gaining credit. So currently, the high school does have a club or after, an after-school activity that runs, but we do, we do believe it will be plenty of interest and students might take this course. And so those three bottom ones that are in the chart are not replacement courses, they're new courses. And what that would mean is that if we choose to run that course, the staff members would be giving up a different course that they'd be running. And so we weren't, we're not adding additional unless it is, unless the needs are there with our current students enrollment. And so with that, we're asking administration to, oh, I forgot my part, I'm sorry. One piece that we do know, we need to do a better job at, is building in our student voice into this process from the beginning. And so while some of these courses do come from students because they will go talk to a teacher or they might run into something with clubs and we just know there's a lot of kids that are interested in it, we don't really have a system in place yet where we can say, proud source, what's going on? What are the things that you guys want to take? And are these courses actually meeting your needs? And so we're really hopeful to build that, we're going to work with Dr. Bealan and his team over at the high school to build that into our process for next school year and we'll definitely want to leverage your voices to help us figure out what's the best way to do that.
I should think that's going to be one of the, like, very timely tasks that we would love to have you part of, that committee work and getting that feedback. Again, to be able to, a lot of great courses, but are we keeping courses on the books that are really of interest of our students? And what are we missing that we need to continue to plan ahead for? So that is actually one of the very, very first tasks that we hope that you are willing and excited to be part of. With that, I'll take any questions.
Just a couple of questions. On the CNA, this is open to anyone who's a junior or senior, right? So it's not restricted at all, you don't have to be in the academy or anything?
Correct.
Okay. And then how many students are doing the MCC now? I guess I saw sixteen as kind of a small number.
Yeah, correct. It is. So the reason there's sixteen on here is because there are requirements from the state on how many students one person can oversee in clinical hours. So that's what the tech at that has one little section, but right now, we have about thirteen to fifteen kids each semester going over to MCC.
Okay, so we're not limited now. Would we be, if more people are interested in it, would we add a section or how would that work?
That would be a hope that we would be able to do depending on staffing and how we have all of our endorsements of our staff members and their availability. As it grows, we would look to, of course, respond and offer more options.
Okay, and then the clinic hours, do we have local areas lined up to, where they can do their clinic hours, either at Northwestern or some of the?
Thank you. So Ms. St. Clair is absolutely fantastic, she has plenty of connections and she has reached out to many different, there's retirement homes around, there's different areas that are already saying, hey, we'll pick your students. And so we're excited about that, yes, we have some options.
Okay, and then switching gears a little bit, on the AP Business Principles and Personal Finance, which sounds like a great class, did I read correctly, this is a new AP class?
It is.
Okay, so is there any risk to that, with the first time it's running?
I mean, the only risk is we're going to be learning alongside of how they decide to create the course, so there could be changes after the first year to the syllabus. So a staff member who is teaching it might need to adjust how they do it here too, they have a lot been learned. But actually, a couple of the texts that they're looking at are texts that some of our staff members have actually utilized in some classes. So we feel pretty confident, but there is risk that you plan for one year and then they say, oh, we need to change something, you have to make some adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a question about the broadcasting course.
Yeah.
I know we have, or we have, not like community radio, that has done football broadcasts in the past, is there an opportunity, not to say that it's definite, but is there an opportunity possibly to have students do a broadcast through the radio station for football season or even basketball season? I know they have their set programming schedules and such, but that still might be something that could be looked into, to get that real, real experience.
That's a great idea, we'll all definitely connect with TETER and see how she wants to plan it out, but yeah, thanks for sharing that.
Sure.
I have a quick question about the French. So I saw that in order to be eligible for this, then you had to have a D for better in both sections, but I also see that this is kind of also tied to our global academy. So is there, I mean, I know it's not that standard, but I would hate for a student who's struggling to have them sit down on that fourth year with the global academy. If there was room, if the class wasn't filled, could there be an opportunity where somebody could take it on like a probationary? I want to make sure that we don't, you know, exclude, that opportunity because we've been a struggle first semester, second semester and lose that fourth year in the global academy.
No, so I see, you bring up two good points. So you do not have to be in the global academy to take the French courses. If you take all four courses, you could be qualified to receive your global academy credit. So if that wasn't mentioned true, I apologize in there, so we can make sure we clarify that. But if, if only you've taken French one, two, three and received the scores that we have and have met those criteria, you could continue to take French four without being in the global academy.
Right, but let's say you, you got a D first semester of French three and then you're going to C or above, do you automatically be kind of excluded because you're not a dual credit AP class? Is there that opportunity if that class wasn't full, for that person to be, to take that kind of probationary, like let's try it and see?
Not for this one because it is dual credit, like you said, yes. I can tell you that the number of students we have currently in French has gotten smaller. And so typically, those students that are at this level do pretty well, like they have been able to maintain their grades.
Okay, so we're not at risk of something happening in this first?
Correct.
Because we've changed from French four to an AP dual credit French four.
There is so many conversations, if a student within the French three didn't do well, about should you continue French four anyways? We would have that any student, no matter what, if we were not dual credit, because we don't let a student in something they might not have demonstrated proficiency at a, you know, high enough level to move on. We would have that conversation anyways, but yeah, that would, that's how that would work.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you, Brad.
I had a couple of questions, Dr. McCrendle. For the nursing course, I'm hearing correctly that one goes through this, they should be ready, CNA ready, so to speak, to take the exam? Is that the?
They would be ready to take, I mean, should I say the correct one? Dr. Bealan, you don't know that off the top of your head, right?
Off the top of my head, no.
I know, I'm looking through that. They would be ready? I am not, I'd have, Mr. Robbie, I'd have to, oh, cost the CNA certification exam, yes. That would be the one that they would take.
Okay, and so I guess the question would be, since this is the first time we're doing this, which is very exciting, is there a way to do like some sort of assessment after the course to find out how many students felt ready to take the exam and how many passed first versus passed because they were prepared versus just assuming that you take this course, you should become a CNA? I think it'd just be good to have a good feedback loop back.
Great idea, we could definitely do that.
And then?
We could probably actually do many of our certification courses now, I think, so we could think through that and how we could build that in.
Great, thank you, thank you. And then for the Business Principles and Personal Finance, again, also very exciting, is there any opportunities to have the practical experience of using those business concepts with the incubator or the sharp tank, opportunity where there's a bridge there, so that way they could actually apply those skills that they're learning, those business and personal finance skills in those types of presentations?
We, I would, it'll be interesting to see what students sign up for this, but I would assume there'd probably be some overlap in that and then we could start to encourage that a little bit more because you're right, there exists a direct connection between those courses and that entrepreneurship and how you understand those basic, you know, skills in order to do that.
Yeah, and to apply them, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that was it, thank you.
Any other questions?
I know I didn't prepare them ahead of time, but since this does talk about students and it's probably one of the ones you might be able to jump in without a lot of preparation. Any comments on the courses that are being discussed this evening, maybe you'd like to share anything on? I normally wouldn't do that to you all.
I did have one with the AP business class, maybe which department it would be under because I know we do already run a financial algebra class and I know of the impact of that.
So this would be within the CTE department, so Mr. Weeoff has the department he oversees. And so there might be some overlap, but what I, what we're foreseeing is this will be the kids that maybe did that course and then they went to go ahead and go more in depth and they, they had success and they want to be able to take it out longer, you know, for like one year period after they, after that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear just to make sure they're not like confused and there's like, there's one class, one, but why is there an AP?
Thank you, good question.
All right, hearing no other questions, we will move that forward to the October 16th meeting, 5.2, Dr. McCrendle.
Actually, I'm going to start it and I will take it off and then send it on over to Dr. McCrendle. We have an EAB contract currently and we are looking to do an extension, another three-year extension on that. And Dr. McCrendle can go and tell the specifics, but what I wanted to share was, over the last few years, we've had a number of partnerships that we have had and contracts with a variety of different research companies that are out there. And a number of those, we have looked at the type of information we're getting and the impact that it's had on the district and our students and our staff. And a lot of those, we have decided not to continue. The recommendation with EAB, the Education Advisory for the District Leadership Forum, it's a research company that we have partnered with for a number of years. And thinking about return on investment, thinking about how timely they are with so many key initiatives that we've talked about very recently, and Dr. McCrendle can kind of hit on those a little bit more from the literacy all the way up through our attendance pieces. We really feel that this is a valuable partnership, it's a valuable contract. We know that there are things that we are looking for in our budget that we can do without. Again, based on a lot of the work that we have done and the impact that they've been able to provide, very timely research to us and that we've been able to turn around and see immediate results in, is the reason we're bringing this forward for another three-year contract. So Dr. McCrendle, I'll let you kind of touch on each of those different things and what this contract and the services that they provide us.
Thank you, Ms. Lombard. So tonight, we do have a for you, a three-year extension with EAB. The reason for three years is when you do multiple years, you save, you get some price savings. And so we like to make sure that we are giving the best value for our dollars. And as Ms. Lombard said, this is probably one of the best organizations or resources that I have seen in regards to providing timely, evidence-based research that really, they go beyond just giving you the research, they give you practical how-to steps. And so a couple of examples that many of you will have been able to experience, our literacy work that we started about six years ago, we rooted it in EAB's research, they came out with a practical, this is how you could implement this, we followed it to a T in regards to professional learning for staff, how do you rearrange your frameworks? And then they've even since then gone ahead and had follow-up groups to start to track success and you are able to have a network of other districts who can, you can get ideas from, you can share your ideas and say what's working. And so literacy is one of the areas that we really have seen a huge growth in our data, our statewide data and as well as with our teacher's instruction. A couple of the other areas I included in here was actually the work of the strategic plan. I know that Ms. Lombard led that work and, you know, as a group, and we were able to root that in the plans that they presented and did not need to go find a separate company to kind of lead that because we could leverage that partnership to help provide that. Our math work right now is one of our topics and we are guiding really deep into that. And we currently have some pilot studies going into some of our schools, following what they are suggesting as a model. So we're hopeful to see that, that growth. Attendance, as Ms. Lombard said, the behavior work that we did as a district right out of the pandemic, the new behaviors were difficult and we had to figure out how we reset that norm and. norm and set our classroom expectations. And so to our students, if you've heard anything about SOIT or CHAMP or any of that, that all came from EAB and kind of helping to guide that work. And then most recently, I guess, at the end of last year with our artificial, our AI, artificial intelligence work, and so that task force that was put together, we were able to leverage their research and their guidance in there. Beyond there, I do have a list of the different ideas and things that we get from that. We get monthly executive briefings, there are superintendent roundtables that Ms. Lombard might have been able to attend over the last few years, we were able to engage in them explaining their research on their big topics that they choose on an annual basis. There are virtual sessions that we attend, different task forces and groups, and then they have an on-demand research library. So one that I currently, I was researching today, it was actually middle school schedules. And was there anything new within the middle school schedule research that has come out? I also can have them do customized studies for us, and so they will go out and pull information together and present it to us so that then we can, we can make some informed decisions. And so it's a, as Ms. Lombard said, it's an extremely valuable resource and something that we definitely find value in so much, that we want to extend that partnership. And so we do have a three-year contract before you, they increased it by $1,500 from the last three-year contract, we were able to shave off a little bit from there and asked them to give us one free year of the, what did I get them to give us free? It was the administrative and travel fee, so that we could make sure that we, we were able to do that for year one, and maybe give that to us as well. And so with that, we can entertain any questions, and with your approval, we'd be pushing it forward for approval at the next board meeting.
Any questions? All right, not hearing any questions, we'll move on to 5.3, graduation venue discussion with Ms. Lombard and Dr. Billen.
All right, Dr. Billen, come on up to the podium. I made a copy for you just in case you needed it, you've got your technology though. So last month, we did bring forward a recommendation for a three-year contract with NIU to potentially use for a continuation of our high school graduation ceremony venue. We did go back to look at four different opportunities or possibilities that I'm going to ask Dr. Billen to kind of walk through here in just a moment, looking at a variety of different aspects that a group of us identified as kind of key things to consider in each of these, to do kind of a side-by-side. A decision like this isn't going to just be on cost alone, because we want to make sure that the high school graduation ceremony truly does embody what it should. This is a milestone achievement for our students and our staff and our families to celebrate together, and we wanted to make sure that the different locations could honor that, as well as take into consideration some other components that have been discussed in terms of trial costs, all of those things. So I'm going to kick it over to you, Dr. B, we will contact team any part of this, and we'll open it up to some questions, but the four different places that we looked at were the Now Arena, Willow Creek, South Barrington, NIU, and Red Raider Field, South Stadium, there we go.
Perfect, well, first off.
You guys all have some photos and documentation in front of you, that's kind of what you're going to kick it off with there, and as you're going to talk, I'll try to put it up the side-by-side here, so you can take it away while I do that.
Awesome, well, first off, happy homecoming week, that is why I am dressed the way that I am, we did not make it home to change for this meeting, but ah, so, what's your name?
Students got their stuff, they made it.
I was still working. First off, when we took on this venture to look at these facilities, basically from the ask of the board, from the last board meeting, we did reach out to some of our contacts at the facilities that we had to be able to gather some information that has already been put together. I will state that in gathering this information, we did not engage in significant depth with, for example, the companies that we used when we did the graduations on the field back during COVID, it takes them a lot to have to bring all of that information together and time, and if we're not going with that option, why waste their time? So we did ballpark at least some of these based off of the information that we had. So as I, as I walked through these, there were several areas in which we really focused on, mainly in part, just as Ms. Lombard has stated, really looking at the experience, getting really some voice from both our students as well as looking at, when we talked with the people from those venues, just really what the experience brings, and then making decisions based off of that. Because a lot of what we're able to see, we're able to pick pros and cons for everything, but all of these pros and cons were specifically tied into the experience itself. The Now Arena, we used to be at the Now Arena prior to my arrival here at Huntley, and the Now Arena, while it still stands, there are definitely some, some things that we looked at, and being close, being a venue that can at least hold our capacity and the drive time, really looking at the, the distance in which we, we went. Before, well, before, I'm not going to go specifically in, in depth into those, but the categories we looked at were parking, security, AV and sound, staffing and operations, the drive time, the capacity in which to be able to hold us, the time of day that we have to be able to utilize that facility, whereas some are fixed and some are flexible, and when those flexible options were those that allowed for full day options for us to do what we need to do, as well as accessibility. Accessibility, I do want to highlight that it's not just elevators, escalators, and ADA accessible seating, but some of the, the venues do offer opportunities for language interpretation, which may be something that we look at, and so many features that are out there that could be applied to multiple locations, depending on which we, which one we would go with. So Now Arena, the two big, the two big opportunities that we put together, or the two big items we put together with drive time and the cost range, the cost range, which are really two of the bigger key points of this. The Now Arena, we put first, really looking at some of the pros and cons of it being close, having ample parking and ample opportunity for people to have sightlines within that arena to be able to see. It is in Cook County, so some of the things that those, those venues do allow are for concessions and taxes and kind of a game day experience, if you will, which is a little bit different, right? And when we looked at this, kind of what led us to, which I'll get to towards the end of, of our official recommendation, we wanted to ensure that our families, while being in that venue, had the experience of focusing on what mattered the most, and that's our students. Having the flexibility to get up and go to concessions and do all of the things really takes away from the ambiance of, of what exists, and so that really hits it, our experience for our students, and again, what we need to focus on. In terms of, of space, with our class being just under 700, that kind of changes things a little bit. We offer our students or our families the opportunity to have eight tickets to come to graduation, which is, that's a lot of tickets. Not everybody uses eight. During our graduation rehearsal, we actually collect back almost 1,000 tickets more than what we passed out, just because some only need two or three. And then we do have some families that have reached 15, 20, right? Because their families are big and they're coming from overseas, and some of the cultural components that play into that, and really having their families be a part of the full celebration. Perfect. So that's kind of highlight of Now Arena, Now Arena also is kind of a package deal, right? In terms of security, which is also a big thing, especially now, we really did hone in on what security it does provide, and having that facility being a sporting facility to handle a lot of different events and activities, their security, their staffing, all of their needs are, are there, and kind of comes as a full package, which would be scoped out in the price that they would give us, as well as the ability to, to look at time. We do not know, that's another key point, if the date for '27 and on is available, if this is a venue that we would look at, we would look at what dates become available. We did not put that into this, again, not engaging them to that, to that depth of detail. The next venue we have moving this way is Willow Creek, South Barrington, which is just not far from the Now Arena, so drive time and distance is, is pretty similar. Cost range is a little bit less, again, another facility that is very large to be able to hold the capacity, very similar to the Now Arena, but again, a similar facility, this all package deal in terms of what we get. The challenges for us with Willow Creek is security, right? That being the venue that it is, they operate on volunteers, and so that would be an additional support that we would need to be able to provide for facilities at large. In terms of facilities and restrooms and accessibility, that is a facility that does offer a lot, right? In terms of the experience, the pictures, the, the campus, we do have the ability to have that campus for the entire day. Again, just as I had talked about, the staffing, security is also the same way, right? We will have our SRO, and we are at the mercy of local PD, but they do not have a full security team, so that comes with ticket takers and bags being checked and so forth, like some of our other venues do have. One of the unique features about Willow, South Barrington, is the interpretation services, and that's where we saw this, where it is an app, it's called Live, Live IO, I believe, you scan a QR code, you can select the event and select the language, and it does live interpretation of the event. Our graduation is fully scripted out, so if we got to that need or saw that this was a feature, it may be something to explore, to layer on top of the other venues that we have. Again, we didn't go specifically into detail to that, but once we select a, a venue, that would be something to for sure look into, especially because a lot of our families coming where they're coming from, the only interpretation that we have had since I've been here in the eight years has been ASO, American Sign Language. So we have had those interpreters that we work through, through our district and our services here. The next is NIU, which we are most familiar with, which is where we have been minus the COVID year, or the two years of COVID. NIU is what we know, it is our least expensive, allows us for a multi-year contract. We know the devil in the details about NIU with regard to the travel time and taking good old country back roads to get there, and however, there are multiple ways to get there, but NIU provides kind of an all package deal as well. They are used to doing a number of graduations, they actually host nine graduations almost a weekend for the entire month of May. This is, again, a venue that we have been with, their security is NIU police along with our SRO, who is with us, the visibility, all of the things that exist there, they do not open their concession stands, and so the culture that exists there remains. In terms of sound, right, being able to work with, the challenges that we at least have heard regarding sound is, is an option and an opportunity for us to look at as we explore this, and again, it's what we know, it's what our families know, we have ample seating to expand and or, and or decrease in number, along with our, our student size. Like I said, it is the cheapest, and it is our, will allow us a multi-year contract. The only thing that is a challenge for us right now is time. We are pretty locked in on the time, even with the contract that was presented at last board meeting, it only moved us up an hour, we gained an hour. But trying to get an earlier time in the morning or in the middle of the day would be dependent upon the school that is there before us. With our contracts being kind of shifted, if this is a venue we continue to work with, that is something we can continue to work with them on, that team has been fantastic, they came out to meet with us to talk about this, and we brought those up last year before this contract was drafted. And then Red Raider Stadium, which is our football field. We did this back in 2021, where we had three ceremonies, and it was à la carte for everything, including staging, including seating, all of what we would do here would all be in-house in terms of our volunteers, our, our volunteers, our workers, it kind of would be similar to the same day game day experience that we have, right? So we're looking at parking, we're looking at security from not only our SRO, but Huntley PD, to be able to provide a level of, of protection for this event. Some of the limitations that we have, yes, SIs. In the package that you have, I have included, a huge shout out to our CAD class, the direction of Mr. Weedoff, we were able to scope out in, in terms of feet on the field, we could fit 4,000, just over 4,000 chairs onto the field, right? Protect our turf and all of the things, right, staging and the things that we have had back in '21, we were six feet, six feet of distance from family, so we grouped four chairs together with distance between each of those family groups and all of the things forward and backward to kind of create those bubbles when we did that, and knowing that we can fit 4,000 seats on our, 4,300 seats onto our field, that doesn't count the 1,500 on our home bleachers, and then the other 350 on our visitor bleachers. So we can get really close to the capacities that exist in the arena. However, parking is still limited, we are just about 1,500 spots across our entire campus, that includes Le Glee, we did not count the grass area, but trying to get to that many parking spots then does add the level, with no additional parking around us unless there are some fields that have not been shown yet, that we can park on the farms, but that is not a, is not a thing. So we are very limited to, to that, which would hinder the experience, at least for our families.
Dr. Billen, I knew you put the price up there, the cost, that was the cost the year we did it. We do know that cost would be considerably less, part of that was time, part of that was availability, and so costs were probably quite a bit more expensive at that time for that, looking at what staging would look like, we could outfit it very different for much cheaper costs on, on there, but did put that cost up there as what was at last time. But we do know that renting chairs, it could be something that, down the road, it would be a larger investment upfront, but that could, down the road, look at bringing that cost down.
Absolutely.
However, some of these other pieces are what we're trying to, still figure out how to maneuver through weather, space, all of those.
Yep, the, the other biggest piece about Red Raider Stadium, and even in the schools that do, including our conference schools, while their classes are much smaller and they can do it on their field, they also have contingency plans to be able to move indoors should the weather not cooperate. That is a big hindrance to our experience, because if people are flying from all over the country, all over the world, really, to get here, and some things such as weather were to hinder us for the entire day, we don't have a contingency plan to move into, into our gym, right? We struggle right now with trying to get one of our middle schools into their promotion ceremonies just because of how tight it is, and that includes parking and all of the things, so trying to move 700 graduates indoors and then trying to figure out who gets the ticket to get inside, would, that wouldn't fare well for us at all. So our recommendation was to go or to stay with NIU. Given the cost, given what they provide, and knowing some of the challenges that we have with them, challenges in other areas were much greater to be able to work around, and so we are at least presenting the option to stay with NIU, and we'll really open it up for questions.
No comments?
Thank you.
If costs weren't an option, which would you pick?
If costs weren't an option?
Or were not an issue? Because it feels like we're going to the lowest cost one, which I'm not, I'm not a big fan of. It's a big day.
It is a big day. It would be NIU.
Even with the sound challenges? We, we can't hear you in NIU.
It takes away from the experience.
So. Monitors that sit on stage, because we do use mics and so forth, if we're in an arena, the, the one that is going to give us the bang for our buck in terms of sound will be Willow Creek. It is, it is a venue that has the acoustics and has the speakers and the sound to do all of that. The other three venues, a stadium, two arenas. The other three venues, a stadium, two arenas, we will get the same sound either way. So if it, if we're going for sound, are this naturally going to be a place that, that would do that?
I think one of the other things too, when we look at that, and yes, up there cost, um, of NIU is the cheapest that is up there. Could Red Raider Stadium be cheaper than that? Absolutely it could. Just looking at those pieces of, we've had, um, some schools, uh, share that, um, they do it in an hour by hour. If it's nine o'clock, it's raining, we bump it to 10. At 10, it's bump to 11, 11, bump to 12. Um, that I think would be a frustration for many families not knowing what time it may happen or if at all during the day and what would that contingent? So to me, that's a, that's a difficult contingency plan. If we have something indoor that, um, similar to our Crystal Lake Inn or what some schools to be able to do, um, we could keep it in our community, in our school district. Hands down, that would be the, the place that I would like, um, to see this eventually come to, but with the graduating classes still the size here, um, when we looked at parking, we looked at all of those pieces, um, that is a considerable challenge. Uh, with, with Now Arena, again, um, the things that it offers, uh, very similar to NIU. So that one would have to be a, a one-way look at its own cost first. The cost would be the thing that would eliminate, uh, necessarily Now Arena over, um, NIU because everything else is very, very similar. Some of the things that we've gotten in, again, we did not pull out to everybody, um, is that the sound is difficult for us to hear on the stage, but from our graduates and the, the families, we are not hearing that that is a challenge for them. Um, and unfortunately, they are the, the people we want to make sure that the sound is there for. Willow Creek, when we looked at a lot of that with the cost in there, and we do know that there are, I believe, two schools, could be, I could be wrong, but two schools that utilize that, um, an area of unpredictability is the, um, because it's volunteers for, um, kind of, uh, the, um, ushers, if you will, everything else would be staffed by our district staff. And to be able to ensure that we would have, um, those individuals, um, on a yearly basis, uh, would be extremely difficult for the number that we would need. It was everything from, um, uh, doing the traffic, the parking outside, that would be our staff, um, that would need to be out there. So again, to be familiar with that. The safety and security component, um, was also something, uh, that when we, we did go back and ask, um, who, who is that? And that would be, um, the local police department, um, which again, any of, any of the situations would need to be, um, that, but in Now and NIU, they do have the people who are checking the bags, that there's the, the police that are, um, on site, um, is taking the tickets and all of those. Again, not knowing, um, if we would have enough staff to do that, uh, that was, that was extremely, um, important to us in this decision-making of that. The, the drive is a concern, it is out there, um, but for our graduating classes of this size, um, there aren't very many options for us to go to. So that's kind of that, it does look like some cost, it is the cheapest cost out there. I'm confident we could get Red Raider Stadium cheaper than that, uh, however, it's the, it's the weather and, uh, what do we do, um, to be able to get all those who would want to be able to come, um, in? And even if we could on a beautiful day, it's the parking. I don't know how many would want to park somewhere else and be bussed over, so, um, that would probably be a concern that is, is out there. But, um, hands down, if we get, if, if I had, if I could pick, I'd want it right on, right on our campus. Um, but logistics and stuff that are just really difficult with the size that we have right now.
So just, just to add on the NIU thing, uh, there is the cost of the staff who put in mileage for that. We know that that's about $2,500 a year, so it does pop it over 20,000, um, and it grows each year with the cost of that. Um, the thing that I like about the Red Raider Stadium is that if we, if we thought about this as a 10-year investment, right? So you buy the staging, you buy the chairs, we talk about the screens, which I assume is a big part of your cost. Well, I'm sure we have in our capital budget an upgrade to the stadium scoreboard. So maybe you take some of the graduation money that you would be investing in, that you would spend 10 years times 25,000, 250,000 with the capital budget, and you get a better screen, you can have a visual there. That also helps every single sport and activity that happens on that field, which is the centerpiece for a lot of our activities. So this is the thing, and personally, I've been to NIU and I've been to the one that was on the field, it was the one I enjoyed the most. Um, I didn't really like the NIU ones, but you see, this is what it is. So I, I just, that's when I saw this cost, I'm like, come on. We know that the local schools are doing this, they're not doing this for $40,000 a year, they're doing it for less, and if we looked at this as an investment, is there a way to make it actually better beyond just graduations, but for everything going up? That's, that's the challenge that I think, when you look at doing it on the field, would be.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bealan, for doing the research. And it sounds to me, just to be clear, uh, that what you chose with NIU was not about cost. That was not about finding the cheapest one, just to be clear.
Correct.
Correct, okay. When I look at this as much as I share the same frustration with the sound that NIU, I think what seems to be the most important factor in all of this is security. And I think that should trump everything, should trump cost, it should trump sound, it should trump everything else. And I think when you look at NIU, you have not only just a Huntley SRO, but you have NIU police who are there, who have, as you shared, have nine graduations there in the course of the month of May.
Nine graduations a weekend.
Uh, nine in a week, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they do Friday, Saturday.
Nine, yeah. Uh, so they're used to graduations, they're conditioned, trained and providing that security. Uh, you don't have to worry about weather conditions, if it's gonna be a rainstorm or hail or anything else that could come that day. Uh, at the same time, I go back to security is, I think, especially, uh, staff existing age, that to me is the number one priority. It's, it's beyond cost, it's beyond sound, it's how we make sure that everyone is safe and in a controlled setting where we have local law enforcement support. And it sounds like NIU does have that. And the reality is too, that it is a enclosed controlled space versus an open field. And I think that, uh, in general, when I look at what should be our driver in selecting this, is security.
Now, to, to that point, right, in terms of security, we have not gone in-depth, right? We looked at SRO, local police, right? I don't know what the response time, the emergency, uh, measures and or plans and depending on the facility, if it was different than NIU. We know NIU because it's a, it's a university institution and we have, we know what they provide to us in terms of, um, their response, uh, to what, if should something happen, because our SRO has talked to them. Um, when we, when we built, uh, when we looked at this contract, right, they talked through those, uh, specific details. And Now Arena could have a higher level of response. The Willow Creek South Barrington could have a different level of response, you know, given what's happened. We just don't, again, we don't know that either. So I just, I want to be fair in, in, in that statement as well, not saying just because we've seen it and because we've been there, but I agree, safety is for sure a concern. In my time here, we have used NIU police to ensure specific situations that we have had, just to be mindful of and to be watchful of, and we have met with them prior to our graduation ceremonies to let them know of the nuances that we do have, because we have them.
So over the next three years, what, um, I should know this, but what does, um, graduating classes look like? So it's like seven, less than 700 this year.
Dr. Zerazonic.
So I'll just say that, you know, I remember graduating from my high school and we did not have, we have high school, but we did graduate over 500 kids, did not have the parking. But I remember it being one of the best experiences that, you know, I, I got to graduate from and be on the grounds where I was in the last four years. Um, and so, you know, I, I also don't think that everybody's gonna drive separate. Um, I don't think they're gonna be that short on, on parking spaces, and we do have a lot of grass lots that we could have. I understand why there can be a factor, um, and pushing it back, you know? I think people understand. I mean, I think people, from what I gather from the community, people are tired of driving out to NIU. I get that, you know, it's a good option, but I would, I would, I remember COVID, I remember how fantastic it was, I don't need it to be that hot again. But, uh, I, I really think it was a great experience for, for the students and, uh, I would, I would really love to see it happen, if not this year, moving forward soon.
We could. We have a larger bu- we could drive around a 736, no, I'm just kidding.
I think one of the other things, um, too, that we can do, right? Um, we, we've got this, uh, contract, um, we know that this year graduation is at NIU. Um, at some point, we are going to either need to tell NIU we are not moving forward, um, or they will give that, you know, that spot away, um, but I think we do have a little time. I think one of the things that we can do, um, could be, um, sorry, not for this graduating classes, to send out, we could, um, put together some very specific type of questions and, gather feedback from our freshman, sophomore and junior class, uh, families about, you know, those very things. I think a lot of us are, um, probably spot on with some things, but we're making assumptions as to if people are okay with, um, this or that, or hey, we may say they'd rather not have, um, a pushback of an hour by hour, but maybe being on their own high school ambience is more important than worrying about if it's a nine o'clock or it ends up at two o'clock. And so there could be some very specific questions and we get some, um, feedback, um, from, uh, some of the upcoming classes to, to be able to make that decision. I think one of the things we're gonna need to definitely be mindful of, again, best-case scenario, I'd love it in, on our campus, is that if we do go that route, we're gonna need to have that route as a commitment for a number of years because, um, some of these others, just like the Now, we don't know, we put it on there, we don't know if we'd even be able to have, um, time because of other schools that are on there. So we may be eliminating some of those, so we would want to make sure, um, from a cost standpoint, we may need to put some things upfront to be able to not always be renting, but having some of these things in-house, um, there. So, uh, that is something we could turn around pretty quickly and get some feedback on. So again, not holding this contract, you know, for months, but to be able to, to gather that. I'm going to put this out to see just logistically here where all the, the components of some are very similar across the board, um, and there are some that, um, are extremely, um, night and day up there, but, uh, that is something, um, Mrs. Barr, hopefully you'd be, uh, willing to help us out with some of, uh, putting a survey like that together and we could look at that. Um, and it could, it helped, um, set the stage of why we are reaching out to parents about graduation, but these decisions do need to be, you know, made, uh, ahead of time, like really finding out the, what is, uh, those important things that are either non-negotiables or no, we need, you know, eight to 10 tickets, or we would be okay with tickets that would be, you know, a smaller size for, for that to be in-house. But, on that.
The graduation that was held at the high school several years ago, we did win the tickets to, what, four people per student?
Yes, but that was.
We did that in the face court.
Yeah, because I, I understand, but that should give us a little bit of idea because that also impaled cars on campus and.
We also did three ceremonies.
Three ceremonies, right, I remember that too.
Right now, I, I mean, if my math is right, it's about six per student, based on less than 700 kids.
Yes, I mean, when our graduation, for example, this year here at NIU, we have up to 8,000 seats, right? But yes, we could reduce it.
Um, also to Mr. Pittman's point, Mark, you might remember this a little better, that scoreboard that we do have right now, that wasn't something that we put money into, was it? I don't think that it, I don't recall it as it was.
No, we used a marketing advertising company. There was an initial downstroke, capital outlay, uh, but we've recouped that over the years. Um, it was relatively small versus, uh, what they did for us. So they sold the, the marketing and the advertising on that side, and essentially, at the end of the day, I do believe, if I recall, after four or five years, that, that signage, if you will, uh, with the scoreboard was free.
Whatever.
Yeah, and we're still using that company for various, um, scoreboards, um, and, and we would definitely look to go down that path because we would keep the marketing moving forward. So that would offset some of that cost.
And then if we were to do the investment also, as Mr. Pittman suggested, of what we need to invest in some kind of a structure for storage purposes, because if we're going to be buying stuff specifically for graduation, if I understand the concept correctly, now you've gotta put it somewhere and there just isn't a lot of storage space to house that kind of, I mean, equipment and whatever else is associated with it, so that the outlay is a little bit even more significant. Plus, you gotta put that building someplace. If I'm kind of thinking, I had a couple steps here. I'm lobbying for a maintenance building for all my equipment and that, so, we'll talk later. Yeah, well, we've all stemmed from the budget objection more, we don't estimate what that looks like for the next several years.
Any other questions, comments or items for discussion?
I guess, is it, is it bombarding the students to ask them because they'd be the ones graduating, or is that wrong? Did I break a rule?
No, yeah, definitely.
You guys are the ones who are gonna graduate, so.
I think it would be cool to have it at the stadium, but I mean, I've been to NIU twice for my sister's graduation and I've enjoyed them. I got it really fun, a huge problem, but I do think that'd be cool to have at the stadium. I just don't know where they throw all the stuff. I, that's what I think.
My graduation is this year at NIU, but I think, um, the students would enjoy having, um, graduation at the school, but also, um, keeping in mind and having good parking control, because I think we've all been, um, we've been to a football game trying to get to the parking lot. It's a bit challenging.
So, before we close this, would you like us to put a survey together and get some feedback from the upcoming graduation classes?
Um, this one, Mark, with students being included in that or just parents?
Well, we could do two, kind of, either questions to ask might be a long difference, we could absolutely do that, or it could be one that they do as a family, but, um, obviously student voice would be important in there. And I, I know you're talking about parking, here's one of the things, right? If every 700 students did that and they drove because they had to be there earlier, we're probably gonna need them to park somewhere else and bust them over, get it a drop-off or something like that. But there's, there's a lot of things that we could get, um, some questions, students specific.
And I, I do know we do have a DSL TV coming up very soon.
The freshmen, sophomores and juniors will be the ones taking this survey, since you said, you pointed out, it's already, you guys are already at NIU, um, on that, that you could help making a decision and a, uh, legacy for future classes as well.
I guess, just my question, going back to the, my earlier concerns about security, has the Huntley police been insulted on this too?
No, we, yeah, we have not gone.
We'd have to consult them and see could they handle the bandwidth before we have everyone say the stadium and then they say we can't.
Well, in terms of, like even, from just the experience of, right, like our homecoming parade that we had this, uh, this Sunday, um, we know that they partner with, uh, local communities, Kent County, McHenry County and so forth, to provide, uh, additional support. And I'm sure their emergency management and the things that they have done, uh, would for sure be something to put on, uh, on their plate if, if that is the route that we, that we go.
Maybe even from support standpoint, if you're calling in, eh, help from other communities, those communities have their high school graduations somewhere, it, it might be that same weekend, so they might be stretched well, depending on how those schedules overlap. Not, not certainty, but that, that could impact this entire grant scheme too, because it's not an endless supply of officers and support staff.
Some of that would be information we already have, since we have done this on campus. Yes, I know it's been, um, five years, the times have changed, but some of that support, um, that they would be offering to us is the same. If they wouldn't necessarily be the ticket taker and then all of those components, we still know how that. And some of it, we would have to continue to go back and to the drawing board and look because again, um, and some of it, we would have to continue to go back to the drawing board and look because again, five years, it's, it's a long time and things have changed. Part of that is wherever on campus, any traffic or anything on certain roads, that's county, and other parts, it's part of the, you know, the Huntley Village. So we need to work with a number of people and, and doctors, or Dr. Scottner, I'm just going to call you Dr. Snitzer Dean. So pulling Mr. Dean to work through some of those. But the partnership that we do have with the Huntley PD is fantastic. And so we know we'd be able to, to really sit down and look at this logistically.
There's also something positive of having the local support, local police support actually doing the security, gotten rid of anything happened. Kind of rather have Huntley there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So you're done. Next step here, either we're moving to NIU or you'd like us to survey.
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 That's, well, this committee is a thunder, a thunder curriculum instruction because I didn't really know where I was going to put it. It kind of goes across the whole board. But real quick, to Mr. Bobby's point, I mean, I'm all for let's get sister lay some families, the students, the community also, you know, get some feelers out there or what. So that we have that, so we don't come back in a couple of weeks and we're like, okay, well, we've got student input, but now what? Can we just get some feelers out for those legislative questions?
Yeah, I'm good with the survey. I just, I wouldn't want us to at least tell the Huntley Police Department. I mean, they've done, like they, the Hoot and Annie has 3,000 plus people there. We know they can do major events, but just want to get the green light that they could say, yes, we can support this.
Yes, it's moving forward, right, to see if this is really what our community wants and making sure we're going in the right direction on that. Yep, we'll pull that survey together. The other reason of that is where then I would have Dr. Beal in and Mr. Dean work as a team together on all of that. We do have processes and procedures for large scale events and we go through all of that. So that can be happening simultaneously and all of that information can be brought forward. So sometimes it's kind of a narrative to a couple of these kind of potentially out, but needing a little bit more information on, on the high school component of that. So is the motion into table this, Mr. Troy? Is that how?
This is a motion. This is the committee's whole discussion. That's why we have these.
Okay, so we just won't move it in that direction?
Yeah.
All right. I think that's the end. I will turn it over to Mr. Bobby for the Special Education Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Pittman. Number six, Special Education Committee, Ms. Gill, the update.
Yes, I just have one update for you that I'm not even going to deliver. I'm going to invite Mr. Pinky up, our late principal. We're really excited to have him here. Tonight, he's just going to provide you with a brief update. Brief, right, we said five to seven minutes. Brief, yeah, brief update on the exciting launch of Lightworks. It is our new storefront business for our light program. And to share our next steps in supporting students in these real work, real world vocational skills and opportunities. So tonight he'll present, I just, the look ahead for this year's goals and vision. We know that there, this is a program that's going to continue to develop and we're really very excited to share this with you. Go ahead.
Thanks, DeeDee. Yeah, I'm just here tonight just to update the board on where we're at and what we plan on doing this year because obviously we're really excited to be at this point. Obviously, some of the things we'll be doing will be in the community. So just being more aware of what, where we're at right, right now and what we want to do. Before, don't worry, I know there's a presentation, but there's only like six slides, so we'll keep it to five to seven minutes, I promise. But I do want to take a time. I know we've spent a lot of time thanking a lot of people. There's, I could spend all night thanking all the people that have been here since the beginning to get to this point. But I do want to take a minute just to thank a couple of people that really played a pivotal role in allowing me to be here tonight to talk about this business plan specifically. Julie Jensen, one of our transition facilitators, really did a lot of light work everywhere from listening student feedback about the logo that we've created, ordering the equipment we needed, finding the best ones that we could do, organizing a business plan, and, and really played a pivotal role in, in making sure I could stand up here today to talk about how we're going to actually start running a business. And then our admin assistant, who obviously worked side by side with her, Kelly Vitor, who did a lot of the ordering and just making sure we got the furniture we needed and all the different equipment that Julie did the research on and worked with the students on. So I'm just super excited to present to you guys about where we're at and what we're trying to do here. I know Amy's helping with the presentation, right? So maybe I'll do a little tap tap when we're ready for the next slide. All right. That was the first tap tap. Yeah, all right. Thank you. So, you know, why Lightworks? Why a business? Why are we trying to do this? We know Huntley High School has, you know, their sensibility business. Obviously, we're helping provide our students real life work experiences, but with more support before they go out to the community to try a, a more formal internship or a paid competitive employment in the community. So it allows our staff to be there, helping them build those, those, those job skills, build that independence and obviously that confidence to go out and get that job and, and work in our communities. Obviously, we're, you know, to follow some guidelines with the legislation to make sure we're creating opportunities like this for our students through both obviously IDA and the Wyoming Acts there of the, I won't go into details there. I do have more information if you guys have questions on that later on, but there's obviously obvious reasons why we are creating this business. Oh, you knew we were going on. All right, great. I didn't have to do a tap tap. So what products are we going to do? Well, not quite yet. I think one thing, one exciting thing we, I think we decided to do with our business was instead of being bound to one product, and that's where this Lightworks came from, is we wanted our students, our future students, to have the opportunity to create and plan and get whatever we want to sell off the ground because that's a big piece of, of that experience of, of running a business is, you know, with, with the one product, once we get it going, then it's like future students would just come in and kind of take over what we've already created. So we wanted to give our, an opportunity for our students to create ideas. And that's where the light bulb comes into play of what we could actually sell each year. Yes, we'll probably see some repeats, sale events and so forth. But what we're looking to do with our business is to have kind of event sales throughout the year that students have created or have, you know, worked with us on coming up with the idea. So right now, this year, we're looking at doing a spiritware resale. Right now, there's a drive going on. There have been flyers and newsletters. The next slide, when I get to it, does have that flyer on there, but we're trying to collect spiritware from all schools. There's boxes in every school right now. Our students went and delivered it. I drove the bus. It was really fun. And we went around and, and delivered the donation boxes. So the next two weeks, we're collecting spiritware. And of course, we can take more donations later on. And our students will obviously work to then organize, price, and get ready to do an event sale at some point, which we will obviously advertise through social media and newsletters to have the community come out and try, and buy some spiritware for their schools, for their students and so forth. And we're, we're getting close from students and staff. Not sure how much is in the boxes yet. We haven't made phone calls to the schools yet. DeeDee just sent a picture to me of a one bag and one box there that brought, people brought something in a couple of days ago. So we got something so far, so we'll see how it goes. Other some ideas, the kids came up with the plants of, of growing plants. We actually have plant towers that were bought a while ago when we were at the high school. They were growing lettuce for the cafeteria a while back, if you guys remember. We've brought those back out and those are up and running and our students have picked out plants that they're going to start growing now and then be able to sell in the, in the spring. And they're all, each picking their, the type of plants they want to grow and so forth. We have a lot of different equipment, like a 3D printer, a button maker, greeting cards, obviously materials to make greeting cards for the holidays and so forth. So we want to do other type of sales that involve more of what students wanted to create with like maybe sidges through the 3D printer or making greeting cards for the holidays, which we've done last year at some of the farmers markets, the Huntley Farmers Market and, and so forth. So lots of different things through what we could do. And we're going to be doing event sales at our storefront, not open for business all the time. It will be, you know, obviously multiple days where we're open for business for the community to come out and, and see what we got and to buy what we are trying to sell, but we won't be open for business like every day, all day. And then we're also going to provide some service-based tasks that our students can, can create to help the district, maybe with events they're doing. We're already kind of doing that already with helping different schools set up for holiday events, putting together, we helped with the Huntley Hoot and Annie and came over and helped pack the bags and stuff like that. So obviously having a more formal way to get requests for service support and then going out in our community and, and school district to help with that. So just another way to get some work experience in a different way. This is just a flyer that you'll see in our newsletter that, that's this week and next week about the collection of, of our spiritware from the different buildings. So please turn it in. Obviously, what are our students learning? What's really cool, what we can do with this is we've, we've created some roles and then we, job descriptions and then we'll enter, students can apply, interview, and just go through that whole job attainment process internally with these different ideas of different roles that they could apply for and obviously rotate students through that. So that would be really awesome. And, and obviously the rest of this is pretty self-explanatory about the skills that they can learn by it, all different areas. And then, yeah, next slide. So how are we going to kind of figure out where we're at? These are just some of the ideas of, obviously, we want to target our customers, of the students, the families, the staff, the community, all of the above, by having that storefront that will allow us to do that. We installed a door internally that will allow us to keep the back of our building secure while we open the doors to the community, which was, was something we've been waiting on and got it done very recently. So that's awesome. So we'll be able to actually stay, keep our students safe that it might be if we're open during school hours when the community is coming in and so forth. So that's something just I really wanted to point out. You know, we, we obviously had the opportunities to, to be in the community during seasonal events. We want to have an online presence and be able to online order. And I'll talk about that on the next slide. And then obviously getting our community involved to, to help the students with the ideas that they have and, and including the community on many different things that we decide to do. Revenue, we've already, we were going to use the Square. We worked with some people internally to know that would probably be the best device to use, but that provides a lot of opportunities for us to track our sales, know where our inventory is, having accounting, the kids be able to do refunds and also and do the, I guess, point of sale, as well as the accounting pieces that the Square offers in, in regard to making sure we're tracking our money coming in and, and money going out for purchasing for our business. You might go back really quick. Obviously, the students know that our profits will be reinvested into our business. I think what's really cool about this is this allows them to learn that just because we make some money, that's not profit because there's a lot of costs to think about in the future that we might want to buy a certain things for our business to enhance it. One simple example would be the boxes. We went to buy nicer bins for the donation boxes for this drive and it was going to be $200. And we're like, no, we don't need that. Let's go get some cardboard boxes and then cover them with butcher paper. And that's what we decided to do. But the students realized, wow, it's 200 bucks for some nice plastic bins. Yeah, it adds up. So really cool just to see them learning already with what we're already doing to get this first event set up. We plan on being at our employment center, which is obviously the picture there, to do a lot of our event sales, but also trying to work with the schools on events that they're doing to maybe try to sell the spiritware there as well, not step on any booster's toes that might be selling you spiritware at those events. But we have lots of ideas of where else we could try to sell our products than just at the employment center. Okay? This is how we are going to try to evaluate, obviously watching our student growth, how their, their skills are being developed through the task analysis that we're doing. Obviously, using our sales revenue, customer satisfaction, doing out, doing out some surveys and so forth, and, you know, getting staff feedback, student reflection and so forth. And customer surveys will be how we continue to improve our business and so forth. And then, I mean, there's a lot more to come. Again, our big goal today was just to let you guys know that we're going to be out there. We're going to be doing some fun event sales this year. The, the spiritware, the plant sales, holiday cards, you know, we have, and then obviously the, the things that the students come up with, with like, with using the different devices that we have to, to create. And that's what we're looking forward to, seeing what else, other ideas our students come up with to, to give them that opportunity to. Because entrepreneurship is actually a really big piece that we are starting to see a lot of adults with disabilities bring in supplementary income with by selling their artwork, selling, using Etsy, using online stores to help sell their stuff that they're creating because, you know, going to a nine to five job can be difficult for some of our students. So I think that flexibility to do entrepreneurship, and we want to give them that example. One of our curriculums, next up curriculum, has a whole student entrepreneurship curriculum and, and lessons that go with that. So it's not like we're just creating it on a whim. We have some very good resources to help guide our students through learning about entrepreneur, entrepreneurship. Okay?
And then, Mr. Pinky, you guys will come back toward the end of the year with some students and some of your staff.
Yes.
Kind of sharing how this all came to fruition and how the year went.
We hope to have that opportunity to come back and, and give you great news of how awesome it went this year.
Or what we learned, right?
Yes, or what we learned, for sure. We're already learning a lot. I don't know if there's any, any time for questions. If there's any questions you guys had about the things we're trying to do this year or any clarification?
Any questions, Mr. Pinky?
I think it looks like a fantastic idea. What percentage of students in the light program would be participating in this program?
Appreciate you asking that because that's actually something I meant to say. Because there's so many different opportunities, basically, all of our students who rotate through the Vine Street location, so anyone scheduled at Vine Street would have an opportunity to be a part of the business. And what's nice is obviously there's plenty of different roles that will play in all these event sales to allow everyone at, at different levels of ability to be involved. So we have our students that could maybe help run the website and, and do the marketing while we have other students helping with doing the point of sale and organizing the, the inventory and stuff like that. So number wise, I mean, we have about 40 students that are scheduled in our buildings. We have a total of 60 students in our program. Those 20 that would still be involved if they, if it's part of their plan, because we do have some students who are taking strictly just MCC classes with some support behind the scenes of getting some skill instruction, executive functioning and so forth. They can definitely be involved too if, as we move forward. But right now, I could confidently say that at least, you know, 40 out of 60, so what percent is that in finance people?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, 66%.
That's great. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
I just think it's awesome. I mean, to just watch this come, you know, to fruition. We've been in the works for years, many conversations. A lot of people fought for this and advocated for this. And I'm just, I'm so excited to see it come to fruition and let us know some hours.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're down from the air.
I would like to do some shopping.
And I wish I had more time to recognize all that because, yes, the vibe is really, really positive this year today. All that hard work we've done over the years and, and really done over the last few years to get to this point, as the vibe is there. The work is hard still right now, but the, where kids are excited, the students are, I mean, the staff are excited just about that we actually have a square. We're going to be actually collecting stuff right now and just hope those boxes are filling up to get some inventory. I actually have another cool story about how this leads to community connections. One of the parents saw, I know, tweet, tweet, time's up. But this is a really cool, that was supposed to be his call sign.
Fourteen.
Okay. But this is a really cool story and I promise I'll walk away from the podium. But we had a parent reach out to us who saw the flyer for this upcoming sale event and, and offered, they run a T-shirt business and they offered to help us make spiritware. Now, we're going to work with that parent on seeing if we can make staff shirts for our students, for like employee shirts and so forth for our business and stuff, but still just that simple flyer caused someone who really wants to work with us and do it and, and help donate and, and use their resources to help us be successful. So I just really look forward to seeing all the other partnerships that just having this business creates for us and so forth. So thank you, guys, and.
Any other questions?
I, I did have sort of comment, question one. I commend you for feeding this, you and your team. This is really exciting. You touched on that students should be involved with the marketing of this as well. And I just, I guess the question is more so, I guess, from this bar is like, is there a way, this does not become like the best kept secret and is blasted out in every way we can to let the community know about it. So it's not also just dependent on your students, but is there a way to widen the, the spectrum when it comes to throwing this?
Well, I appreciate you asking that because just like with the finances, we're going to, it's not just, we're going, they're going to be working with us, you know. to, it's not just, they're going to be working with us, you know? So the one who gets hired for the marketing will be working with us and Denise on making sure it's getting out to the community and on social media and so forth. So, yeah, I appreciate that clarification because we definitely have plans for them to be working with us on those bigger pictures, especially with the finances and making sure we're accounting appropriately and so forth and with the marketing.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Pinky.
Thank you, guys.
Do you have a question for Mr. Almeyer though? Well, you might, the finances, does this go through like an activity? Is it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gill? Nadine?
That is all, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gill. Moving on to finance, Mr. Brady.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bobby. 7.1 monthly fiscal updates, Mr. Almeyer.
Thank you. Only one item to add and it's really just highlighting one of the items of the FY25 audit. We're still working through the audit with the partner and the team, the audit team. But we do plan to have that done by the end of October. Evans Marshall and Tease is scheduled to be here in November as we've done the last several years. So just wanted to update the board on that item. Other than that, there's nothing else to add. Do you have to answer any questions you may have?
Any questions on 7.1? All right, moving forward to 7.2 payables, Mr. Almeyer.
Nothing to add.
Any questions regarding the payables? We'll look to move those forward to the next meeting in two weeks. 7.3 revenue and expenditures report, Mr. Almeyer.
You know, generally there's only one or two months out of the year where I actually say with the executive summary report, nothing to add. And this is one of those months because this is the second month of the year, August 2026. Last month, we obviously approved the budget, the budget is reflected there now in the far right-hand column. But being the second month of the year, no concerns at this time, nothing else to add. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I've got one question and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No.
What's up with the interest?
The interest earnings?
Yeah, because it looked like we didn't get any interest last year and it all showed up in the first two months. The 2.5 million, if I read it correctly.
Oh, that's not the right number.
Okay.
That is not the right number. So thank, no, 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 thank you for catching that. I wish I would have, yeah, and I would have corrected that. That, yeah, that might just be in this version that's online, but let me double check that and we'll correct that and get that out there.
Okay.
Yeah, that is not correct. Probably what ended up happening is a reversal of an audit entry didn't take place to start this school year. It's all work with finance and we'll get to taking care of it. Thank you very much.
I just thought maybe we won the lottery or something like that and you put it out of interest.
I wish we were at 119% two months in the year. And I'm not investing or I shouldn't be, so don't worry about that.
All right, 7.4 revenue contracts, Almeyer.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much. Normally we just pass this off for board approval, but you know, with some recent discussion on fundraising and some recent internal opportunities with operational efficiencies, I thought it would be a good idea to provide a little more insight into funding. We do have a few new folks on the board, but things have changed. Things have changed a lot over the years. So let me start with student fundraising as guided by policy 7.325 and 7.326. Several years ago, we added a little bit on crowdfunding, so that's 7.326, as well as the administrative procedure of 7.325. The key points of the policy cover fundraising expectations as well as ensuring alignment with our policies, procedures and the overall mission, right, of the district. There is a required form every month. You see the required form requiring a 45-day advance approval, signed off generally by the sponsor, approved by the principal, ultimately approved by me. If revenue is generated or if more than $1,000 is generated in revenue as required by ISB, right, the Board of Education needs to require, or excuse me, approve that fundraiser. That's kind of the process for which it's happened. But then, you know, several years ago, crowdfunding came along and it really made me think about, back in the day, and this was a long time ago, kids, a long time ago, think about what fundraising used to be, right? And you think way back when, we used to do popcorn sales and I would, I would pull my radio flyer red wagon with all the popcorn in it. I'd go door to door of every single house in the neighborhood, right? I would sell the big chocolate bars and they weren't just chocolate bars, they were the world's finest chocolate bars. I think they're still around, right? I think you guys know that. Yeah, they're not, yeah, they're not so fine anymore. Right, we would sell candles, we would do bake sales, we would do car washes, right? You don't see a lot of those things anymore, right? And then all of a sudden, well, the internet came along and a better way to do things came along and that's crowdfunding, right? Using the internet to reach out to family, to friends, to community, to reach out to a larger group of people to maybe to sell something, right? It's a safer alternative reaching way, way more people. And over the years, you know, every month we see this and this month we have a couple Snap Raids revenue contracts. We have Snap Raids, we have Fundraiser U, we have Adrenalin, we have Premier, and those are all crowdfunding kind of websites and tools that our coaches and our activity sponsors use because, well, they could reach more people. They could reach a lot more people. But the problem is that they're all very different if you look at them, right? They all take a percentage of the profit of what is being contributed, the revenue raised. And they're usually on every single one of these contracts that you'll see, there is a percentage, a revenue share percentage. Some of the revenue shares are as high as 50%, right? That's generally when we're selling a product. It could be a discount card, right? A lot of the clubs and organizations, the football teams sells the discount card. And there's a lot of work involved with that discount card from the crowdfunding company. They have to work with the local vendors, they have to create the cards, right? There's cost involved. So I understand that it should be a higher percentage that is being shared with that crowd sharing company, but we noticed that whether it's Snap Raids or it's Fundraiser U or it's Premier, they're all a little different, right? And so the opportunity is, and I'm going to be getting with the athletic director next week and some of the folks over at the high school, is to talk, to talk about those things, is to talk about maybe consolidating the crowdfunding companies and making recommendations to our sponsors, to our coaches so that they know what the best alternative is. And it's an operational efficiency, not necessarily for the district, that's actually an operational efficiency for the students. Because if the athletic clubs, right, or the activity clubs could, well, get a little more of their donated revenue in their club pool, well, they have a little more to do, a little more money that they could have for their club rather than giving half of it away, for instance. So we're going to be doing that next week. So I just wanted to talk to the board a little bit about that. Obviously, we're seeing a lot of crowdfunding come through, almost probably 75% of fundraisers we're seeing come through are crowdfunding type events. And so we're going to be looking at that with Marcus, with Rita over at the high school, the athletic director, to see if we can kind of create a little efficiency on that front. So I just wanted to share that, but nothing else to share on today's approval of the revenue contract.
And with, but with those, I know you were going to start that conversation next week, but may take a little bit of time. And I know Dr. Beal, in looking at that, there may be some expectations or things with when somebody may, if, if activity funds are at a certain level, then it could be okay to fundraise or all of those. So some of that guideline, what this group will then bring forward to the policy and legislative committee is some recommended updates to both of those policies and the administrative procedure. So in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing forward some updates and revisions for the policy committee to review and then eventually the, hopefully the board to take action on.
Thank you for that.
I do have a comment. When you meet with R A D, just in the years that I've been here, as far as like when students or athletes would reach out for this type of thing, like a telethon they're doing, that's what it feels like, and they're just asking for money. So I want to encourage like any coach to, I know this is different for football because they have the cards and whatnot. I'm going to go off of like, let's just say soccer, you know, because I'm familiar with soccer. And we won 3-0 tonight to PR. So I just want to throw that in there. Anyways, no, but I mean, like maybe putting a specific thing on, you know, when you ask for money, be like, hey, we want money to go towards, let's see, your warm-up towards our C team or, or whatever it is. I think we can draw a lot more money from parents when they know it's going towards something and be like, oh, we're, we want to get, I know the coach was looking for, you know, to raise money for the covers for the benches, you know, they're trying to raise money for that. I just think instead of saying, just send money to the program, I don't know. I don't really do well with that when people ask for that, you know, versus like, hey, this is what we're raising money for. I think it'd be really good to explain that to people. And I'm not saying every sport, how they do it, I don't know, but I'm just saying I know, I think.
You know, I think that makes a lot of sense.
It's on the form of they have to identify what it is that they're raising money for. So that could be some information that Dr. Beal, you can take that information and share with as part of that marketing and that encouraging of how do we fundraise and.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it doesn't happen. I just know sometimes you just give, just give. And it's like, I don't know, I think that'd be helpful because I would be more inclined to give a lot more if I knew it was going towards those, be like, oh, yeah, that is a good idea. Let's raise more money for that instead of just doing my normal 25 bucks or whatever and whatever. I don't know. That's all.
So on these, on these crowdfunding requests or initiatives, what's the level of success with it relative to what's being proposed? I see $1,000 here or $2,000 there. This is what their target is, but are, how successful are we in meeting the goals itself?
Well, I think over the years, the number that you're seeing on the form is fairly reflective of what we're seeing as revenue going into an activity account. You know, the football program on an annual basis, right? They expect to generate a lot of money, right, 75 plus thousand dollars from the sale of discount cards and they consistently are hitting that or higher. So it's pretty good. I think the coaches understand the success of the crowdfunding programs. They understand the success that they've had in prior years. So the numbers you're seeing are getting better and better because of the experience we have with crowdfunding.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to back up a little bit because I, I had reached out and I wanted to have this conversation. And I'm going to, you know, full transparency, I'm going to take my own personal hit on this for, you know, my vote for June, July and some of these revenue contracts that came through because I held my place on the balcony, right? But I look at, I look back now because I received some questions from parents across multiple sports. And I went back and I looked and I, one example, I'm looking at volleyball. And when I look at what the projected earnings, 40%. The fundraising, fundraising university, which actually the cover sheet says gold funding, but I don't know if they're a subsidiary of fundraising university, they took 60% of the volleyball fundraising. And I, I'm like, how, how did this make it through? Like, there's another one where the cross was getting a cash donation and I think soccer as well, just to cold call a family member and say, hey, can you donate $35? And they're taking 25 or 30% of that. For what? Like, what are they doing that requires them taking that percentage of the profit from the students? And it just, I didn't have answers for people that were asking that. When I'm told that coaches and we're bringing in people from fundraising university that are putting students in a room and saying, call this, call that, call your parents' friends, call this, and they're not comfortable with it and they're being told, well, if you're, if that is a fundraising, you must not want to be on the team. Well, our policy says that fundraising is supposed to be voluntary and when we bring these people in, whoever's coming in, are they being vetted? Are we doing a background check on them? And furthermore, with our special needs students, are these individuals following and adhering to the fourth and IP? What about students who have a ton of anxiety and they don't feel comfortable making those calls and especially in a room? Who is adhering and protecting them? And that's exactly why we are going to, I don't think that these policies or procedures have been updated in years, right? It presses, not making changes, the date might change on there, but if it's, some of it, it's probably been a number of years since all of this has been looked at. And I think that that's why some criteria, some specifics, vetting out exactly what that is. There were, hmm, when we, this crowdfunding procedure was first put in place, there was a lot of questions around that. But Mr. Almeyer, you know, took a look and I don't remember, I have it in front of me, but as we looked at it, so something about star ratings or something like that. And that's not how they do it anymore. And so there's reasons that this has to be looked at on a regular basis. So a lot of those, we don't have answers for specifically on that tonight, but I think that that's why I have to look at that. I'm just letting me just kind of work our process through so that we can think through the whole thing, not just streamlining who we are, but looking at how our coaches are handling this. Are we bringing in people and are we handling this appropriately and being student-centered and student-focused on this? And can we do better to maximize the total profit from these fundraisers to ultimately come to the students and ensure that students are getting what they've worked for?
And that is the ultimate goal, right? Is arming our coaches, arming our activity sponsors with good information and good processes so that we, we know what we should be paying, so to speak, and know what we should be doing. So that, that will be part of the discussion. Everything you touched upon is part of that discussion. So thank you.
Thank you for letting me do the work.
That feels like when, when you speak that, Melissa, is there any pressure going on for the coaches? You got to reach this and you guys, you know, you text away and if they're not answering, you call them. I mean, it's really high pressure on these athletes that I, I don't necessarily agree with. So my opinion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on revenue contracts?
Here are none. We'll move it over to human resources, Mr. Bittman.
Thank you.
All right. Human Resources has one topic. Dr. Zare is going to lead us through the, the numbers of the healthcare.
Yeah, so before you, we've got the recommendation from the health insurance committee and this is the time of year that we get our new rates for 2026 that go into effect on January 1st. So I do have a one-page memo there that kind of lays everything out. Got some changes that came our way at the very 11th hour of this afternoon too with our dental. I know it's very positive, we'll go over those too. So at the high point here, we were going through our renewal process with Alliant and just let everyone know, because the original recommendation from Alliant was for us to switch our medical provider to Aetna. We're going to give us some cost savings. We slept on that one for a couple of nights before coming to the committee. Kind of had a conversation with a couple of people on the committee, didn't feel that that would go over well in the district. And so we went back to our broker and said, you need to come back with something for Blue Cross Blue Shield. So as you see here at the beginning, we're still going to offer four plans, are recommending to offer four plans from Blue Cross Blue Shield, an HMO, and then a couple PTOs and then our high deductible PTO with an HSA. So the offerings aren't going to change, but we're going to see a pretty significant change here in a couple of the plans and we'll get to that. And so I'll make a note of that, but the big number we're looking at here, we're looking at an approximate 15% increase. Mr. Almeyer does a good job at keeping us updated as we go throughout the year. We know what's driving this is high cost payments across the plan, folks that definitely need this medical care and that's why that insurance is in place. And also, and we have the RX that is driving that also through Blue Cross Blue Shield. So those are the two significant things and healthcare costs across the board. So as we stay in the medical plan here, I do have a quick free packet, a three-page packet at your seat, page one. packet, a three-page packet at your seat. Um, page one there is showing, um, the plans that we offer and when the renewal dates are up. So that was the Blue Cross Blue Shield, as you can see, um, they give the ratings there also. Um, next page there, I'll give you an idea of how our medical RX plan is performing, um, over the past few years. And you can see, um, the significant increases there. And then on your third page, um, that you have the alternate plan design that we were looking at. Uh, so moving to Aetna was gonna be an approximate eight hundred thousand dollars worth of savings. Uh, we were able to stick with Blue Cross Blue Shield and essentially get the same savings, but we had to do something different with our plan. And so as you'll see here on that third page, um, the changes are in gray. Um, the primary changes that we're seeing are in the Blue Advantage HMO plan. Uh, we have made changes to the PTOs over the past couple of years. So you'll see a couple tweaks there, but the primary focus is on the HMO plan, uh, where we are adding some deductibles in that did not exist before, um, increasing some co-pays. Uh, so making some pretty good changes to that HMO plan, um, where, you know, the cost isn't the total burden on the district. And now, you know, the committee comes together. Obviously, there's folks on the committee, um, that are personally involved in these plans that we have to reiterate they're making a decision, uh, for the district as a whole. And so, um, these were the recommendations that came through, um, from Alliant and also, uh, from our committee, uh, that helps us maintain Blue Cross Blue Shield. So if you want to note, um, we have discussed, um, the co-op, NIHIP, out there before. And so Mr. Altmeier and I, um, we have met with NIHIP over the last couple of months. Um, so they actually get accepted into this, and it's all done, they have to vote, they look at your information. So, uh, we were able to release our information to NIHIP for them to review. Um, we are thinking in the future, um, that is the direction we are going to investigate, um, very deeply with our committee. Um, in talking to NIHIP, uh, they did let us know that they do Blue Cross Blue Shield only, that they do not do Aetna for medical. So we knew that if we would switch to Aetna, this was another con against switching to Aetna, if we were to go to the co-op, we would have to flip back and we would look pretty silly doing that. So, um, you know, getting these plans up to par, also NIHIP did tell us, um, our plans, as they were standing in 2025, they would have to make, we'd have to make adjustments to what our plans look like in order to be accepted into that co-op. So we're gonna continue to work towards, um, that process here, um, over the next year and to see if that is a viable alternative for us. I think there's twenty, twenty-two districts, um, that are in that specific co-op. Is that right, Mr. Altmeier? Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. And so, um, we also know some surrounding districts, um, that are trying, um, to do that also, um, in an effort to save money. So I'm gonna stop with the medical, um, because that's the big one here. Um, the rest of them, um, are, actually, there's some savings in the other ones, um, and some changes I'd like to discuss, but I'm kind of gonna stop with the medical because that's the big one where we'll receive most of the questions forward.
Any questions for Dr. Zare?
I have a question, Dr. Zare. I gotta say, I'm not an expert in insurance. Did, did Alliant provide any quotes on the medical reimbursement program or MERC, keeping Blue Cross Blue Shield, switching from self-insured to fully insured, and what that would cost in comparison to what they're proposing here?
They did not because we were, we still have to provide that HMO, and that HMO is a roadblock in that, was my understanding. Is that right, Mr. Altmeier?
It, okay, we have to provide the HMO that for the contract.
Yes, for some kind of contract.
I think, again, not suggesting that would make that change for the upcoming year. I'm curious if Alliant can at least give a quote so that we at least know what that number could be in future years and be a point of discussion with the union if, if that was the intention. Because I do know they, uh, what I do know, again, I'm not an expert in this, is Blue Cross Blue Shield does have the very serious PTOs that emulate an HMO but are not exactly, not classified as an HMO.
Right.
So, yeah, again, I'm not saying we should do this now or do it for this fiscal year, but something to just look at for the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, and if the co-op comes to fruition, we're, we're locked into whatever that co-op is providing.
Yeah, so you can, you can choose your different plans in that co-op. So, um, I've looked at some plans in some districts that are in that co-op. It's actually very similar to ours. Um, just has some different names. Um, but, uh, they, they do, they do guide that. And, uh, we haven't had that conversation, um, with the co-op, um, on that option. I'm not sure they would be open to it, but it's tough to get folks to share their medical plans sometimes. We got a couple of districts that are in that co-op that send them over so I can get an idea of, um, what that would look like if we would go in there. Thank you.
So just a couple of questions. Um, on the committee is HEA, ESBA, Edmund, and the board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So who comes up with the percentages of allocation? Is that this committee?
In terms of?
So the, the eighty-four percent, for example, on the Blue Cross PPO.
Oh, great, great. So we have, so let's, let's go to the rate sheet. So the rate sheets are what the employees look at. So that, that first rate sheet is 2025. Um, you won't want to look at the one at your place. It'll be the one that was in the packet. The one that, well, the one that's at your, that's at your seat, why don't you look at that? That's okay. That's what 2026 is looking like, other than I have an update to the dental at your seat. So that first sheet that's in your packet is 2025. So as you look at that, you are seeing, um, this is per pay. So what folks pay on the 10th and 25th for the chosen, the chosen plan on the balance owed. So Mr. Bittman's question is, that percentage out to the side. So we have contract language that drives that. So in that first column there, you'll notice that PPO two has ninety-five percent next to it. So in our contract language, um, our contract link, I don't have it in front of me, we get it right though, um, it is single coverage. Uh, the board covers ninety-five percent of the PPO two plan. So on the other two plans, so when you create that number there, um, looking at the 2025 one, you'll see that, that comes out to four ninety-three thirty-six, then you apply that to the rest of the plan. And then it subtracts down and it gives you, um, what it costs per pay. So if you move over to employee plus one and family, our language reads, it's seventy-five percent of the second highest cost plan. So that is the HMO, um, this year. So we apply that seventy-five percent, and then it starts, you see that number has been duplicated in the other three plans for employee plus one and employee family. So in short, uh, those percentages are driven by our contract language.
Okay. So just, and, and just like what Mr. Bobby brought up, we are restricted because of the HMO language in the contract, and we are, if Blue Cross Blue Shields or whoever we decide to go to goes up twenty-five percent, our cost is gonna go up twenty-five percent because we have strict percentages in the contract.
We have, yes, we have, yeah, we have.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear that that was in the public. We are, we are locked into these rates, and it's, we're kind of at the mercy because of the contract with whatever Blue Cross Blue Shield gives us.
Yeah. And, um, you know, as we hear from the committee and also, you know, folks that work in our district, um, the benefits are, are strong. So, uh, we know that's a positive. Um, as we went through, um, you know, the last two negotiations, we didn't see any change, um, to the benefits. Um, HEA drives that, ESBA then emulates that. So the language in the ESBA contract pretty much says, look at the HEA contract. But last time around with HEA, um, there wasn't any changes. I mean, it was two contracts ago. Uh, we made some major changes that got us to that seventy-five percent. It used to be seventy, um, a few years back, um, for the employee plus one and the family. And so I'll explain these rate sheets because they get, they get a little, a little complicated. Um, so if you got your 2025, and you'll see in the upper left-hand corner, it says for the 24 pay period, most of our employees are on 24 pays. So you get paid on the 10th and 25th of every month, but that's the deduction that comes out. So that's, that's the, that's the most popular rate sheet that folks look at. But we have a couple more here, um, that we can all explain real quick. We have the seventeen pay period. So we have, um, some hourly folks that, um, don't choose to be 24 pays, um, if they get paid, um, throughout the school year. And so on that, you'll see those rates are adjusted for those folks to be on insurance, um, to match up with their checks. So then you get into two sheets that are labeled dual medical. So we have language in our contract that if you are married to someone who works in the district, um, there's language that kicks in for your rate. So as you can see on that dual medical 24 pay, um, every plan is five dollars per pay if your spouse works in the district. So that's, that language is probably going on, I don't know, just fifteen plus years probably. Yeah, quite a while. And, um, all the plans of now, you have to pay at least ten dollars a month in a plan. And then that one gets a little complicated because then it can be applied over to the dental based on the plan that you choose. So you get a credit. So, and you can see it drives the cost down. I think, don't quote me on this. I didn't get this tonight. I think we're sixteen couples in the district, um, that are on the dual plan for 24 pays.
Any other questions? All right. Did you want to keep going, dig into the other stuff?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go into the other, um, benefits that we provide here. Um, so dental vision, life, long-term disability. Um, the major change that we are going to make is in dental. And, uh, we have been with MetLife. Uh, this, this was real interesting. Uh, MetLife came back and had a pretty good increase. It was six percent. Um, Aetna's original offer to us was point nine percent, so one percent less than what we were already at. So it made sense. Um, employees are paying that. There is no board contribution to that. So our rates were gonna go down. So if you compare the dental rates with 2025, I did the 24 pay on here, and the 2026 24 pay, you can see, um, a little bit of a decrease there. While we get an email, um, late last night and early this morning, finally got on the phone with Alliant, hey, Aetna's happy to have you, and, um, they would like to decrease the rates even more. And, um, makes me wonder how next year's gonna go. But, um, this is usually how it goes with dental. Um, they'll see what you're paying. So, um, Aetna had a deal out there that if we bundled medical and dental, uh, they would give us the, um, credit. Uh, well, we didn't bundle that. After we went with their dental, they decided, ah, we'll give you the credit anyway. So what you're seeing at your place is the new dental rate. And, um, I didn't get a chance to meet with the committee on this. I have an email ready to go, um, but it essentially decreases what they're paying per pay pretty significantly, up to thirty bucks a month, um, if you're on the high plan for dental. So honestly, Mark and I met with, um, Alliant real quick today on an afternoon call to make sure we understood everything they were sending over via email. And, um, it's the right move. Um, also moving into Aetna, uh, we're seeing, um, any tiny change, um, carriers, you're gonna see a disruption. Uh, but actually, the dentists that our employees use, more of them are now coming into the network. We do have some folks exiting the network, maybe mine, um, but that's okay. Uh, we're doing this for the whole. And, um, but we have, um, a significant number that's coming into the network. So it was tough to sit there and say no to Aetna dental. We've been happy with MetLife. Um, uh, Aetna's also putting a five-point-five percent rate cap for 2027, means it won't go up any more than that. So that's good. Uh, so keeping that dental, you know, they're coming in seven-point-seven percent lower than what we're at right now. So, um, that was a win for us out of all of this, and we got it later today. So, uh, we have that. Um, MetLife, uh, for our life insurance, we'll continue with them. And the other change that the committee recommended, um, DSP vision, actually see those rates go up a little bit. Um, but there was a plan, um, right now, our plan is a hundred and thirty dollars for frames and contacts. Uh, the plan that the committee wanted to move to is a hundred and fifty dollars for frames and a hundred and fifty dollars for contacts. Um, the committee pretty much saying, if you're using that vision insurance, um, we're probably utilizing both the frame allowance and the contact allowance, and thought that would be worth the premium increase. So, um, that was driven by the committee. Um, we did have another company that came in, um, and put a proposal out there, but we've been very happy with DSP and the coverage that we have, specifically some of the private, um, vision doctors that people go to. Um, the switch over to the other company, um, I want to say lens doctors maybe owns them at the end of the day, and it was gonna take away, uh, some of our folks that were able to go to some of these more private facilities, um, in town. So. And then we have been with, um, Aflac voluntary accident, Aflac voluntary critical illness, um, actually very good plans, um, that you can take out. And then if you turn in, um, physicals, um, blood draws and things like that, you actually end up getting your entire premium back if you pay, um, if you turn it in, um, if you pay for the year. So, um, it actually can be no cost to the employee if they do all of the steps. So the recommendation moving forward would be everything here, plus I want to recommend to update this dental that is at your place, and I'm gonna add that in, um, for the board meeting and get those rate sheets out to our committee as soon as we can. We need to do a double check on all those rate sheets tomorrow. That takes a little bit, uh, but we can do that and get that out to the committee. But this would be a recommendation to be on consent in two weeks.
All right. Any, uh, other questions for Dr. Zare?
Yeah, I just had one last one after Zare, and more so just for the community sake. Uh, with Alliant, and going back to the medical insurance, when you shared that Aetna quoted a lesser price and savings around eight hundred thousand dollars, did Alliant then approach Blue Cross Blue Shield and say, look, what Aetna's offering us to try to negotiate the cost down further?
Yeah.
They just, okay, they wanted to make sure we checked the box that Alliant did that these days.
Yeah, thank you. And they go back and sharpen their pencil, if you will. Thank you. And I, I do want to make, I'll make a quick comment about Aetna. Alliant was kind of leaning us that way, um, gave us some references. We contacted the references, and those references that recommended for us the whole time is Blue Cross Blue Shield was sort of that way. They're getting ready to switch back and try to get to the co-op. So we're the neighboring district that, in fact, that will be very transparent, is that they sold us whole time that don't make that move, that they're taking out of that move right now.
Yeah. Uh, any reason not to move this forward for the, for the committee? All right. So we will move this, uh, forward to the board and consent. All right. With that, we will move to number nine, Mr. Troy.
Thank you. Uh, Billian Grouse. Mr. Linklis, kind of updates we have today. Thank you, Mr. Troy. I personally would like to welcome the Philama to the board. And we know the real reason I'm here is to learn more about Phil's incredible presence. That's why everybody's here.
I'd like to welcome you guys, too.
So back to the update. Uh, ten-year health life safety survey is almost complete and will be, uh, presented to you guys, uh, something at the next board meeting, November thirteenth, which is the regular board meeting, because it's the only one that month, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, operational efficiency, future projects. Uh, Mr. Altmeier and myself will be meeting next week to go over, um, some projects coming up. Um, on that shortlist is the lighting in this boardroom. Um, apologize for that light over there. Um, lighting for Cheswick, the high school upgrades, and then with the X schooling replacement for Heinemann-Wilson School. And lastly, is varsity baseball and softball fields have been getting a major makeover, getting ready for next spring. Redoing the whole infield for the baseball, been cutting a lip around the softball field. Really needed it. It was in pretty bad shape for a while. Any questions on those updates?
Questions, anybody? Um, regarding the future projects, so I thought our lighting systems had all been taken care of. So I was surprised to see that Cheswick was, was not.
Cheswick and the high school have yet to be updated to LED lighting. We're still running fluorescent lighting.
Okay. Obviously overdue.
Overdue, yeah.
So that'll help significantly. How old are those light balas now? Those, they should be giving out.
Yeah, they're running around ten years right now. Say, on 2015, they were updated with, um, guaranteed energy savings project, the miss from Cops Grand, um, re-delamps, light fixtures, and put reflectors in to, uh, save energy costs. But now those balas are coming to end of life, and we should be updating the LED lighting.
Following with the frequencies, we can see, uh, how, how quickly the fluorescent bulbs do get out, they get used, you start to chew up quite a significant cost in just replacing the fluorescent bulbs themselves frequently. So the LED upgrade. fluorescent bulbs themselves frequently. So the LED upgrade is going to be welcomed.
And this room, this room's not a short.
Okay, take care of the schools first. Yeah. All right. Eddie, again, any questions on the updates? All right. Moving ahead then, the DX cooling system.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. This is a proposal for the DX cooling system replacement at Heinemann Middle School. On that, August 7, we did the whole meeting. The board was presented with a 10-year capital replacement project list. On that list, we briefly talked about this project coming down the road. This is to replace the 21, 20, 21-year-old DX cooling on top of the roof, which is currently running R22 refrigerant, which is no longer made and very hard to get and expensive. As an example, picture your gas grill propane tank at home. A tank of R22 right now is $683. The new refrigerant going in potentially is only $210 a jug. So that's how expensive R22 has gotten. And we're starting to phase that out of our district. Started way back in 23, 2023, only two years ago, Marlowe, we did this upgrade. It's been running really smooth the last two years. That was the start of getting rid of R22 refrigerant. That has become really hard to get and very expensive. This was sent out to four companies back in, on August 13th. Only two provided proposals. This is a cooperative purchasing project. As you can see the two numbers in front of you on this update. That being said, the administration would like to, the building community should suggest the Board of Education to approve this project at $2,788,129. That being said, I would take any questions, if I have or comments.
Sure. I'll actually kick this one off.
Sure.
What's the budget impact of this? How does this affect your, your capital project?
This is pretty much my whole budget for next summer. There might be a little upgrade to some carpet in classrooms somewhere. That we'll talk next week about things. But this is the majority of my summer budget next year, so.
I gather that is that important?
Very important. I mean, we're putting band-aids on these units for the last few years. And schools need air conditioning. They need heat. Without that, you're, you're e-learning. They're not going to send kids to school because they don't have, we don't have that. So these are things we need to fix through the years.
And I was part of that discussion a couple of years ago when this, this technology was proposed.
Right.
Obviously doing well. But can you elaborate on that a little bit to get others up to speed?
So this new equipment is probably the most efficient equipment out there. It's called a VRF system, which is variable refrigerant frequency. And it takes minimal energy to run these units. These units can also heat the building, which is also a great option. Some call it a heat pump system. So on those odd days where it's real cool in the morning, and we are using heat right now, believe it or not, when kids go, kids and teachers get to school in the morning, the heat's running. But then during the day, you need the cooling. This is the time of year where these units run, and we're not running our large boilers in the schools, spending more money on natural gas. So this equipment is, this is the stuff we're going to put in.
Thank you. It's important to have the color of this as well as the, the technology aspect of this.
Right.
So thank you for providing that. Any questions from the committee for the board?
Mr. Linkless just asked if I had anything to add. And I said, no. But he handed me the mic, so I'm going to take it. You know, because that's what I do. I did take it. I did take it. You know, minus an approval on this, I think what's important to also note is, is a very similar system, a much larger system, as Marlowe was put in two years ago at about $2.2 million. This system is $2.7 million. It's a little smaller. And so, you know, when we look at this based on the tonnage, and you measure refrigerant, right, based on tonnage?
I take the.
Yeah, you can take the mic back.
All right. I didn't want to jump into the weeds too deep on this. Cooling systems are measured by tonnage. One ton is measured out to 12,000 BTUs. You're using coolings to dissipate heat. Heat is measured in BTUs. So one ton, 12,000 BTUs. The tonnage for this project is around 500 tons. A lot of cooling. So that's why the cost is up so high. Where Marlowe, the cost of this equipment has gone up tremendously in the last two years. To be exact, 56% per ton. This has gone up in the last two years. This is going to continue to go up. Whether we do this now or put band-aids on it and do it two years down the road, this could be a three and a half million dollar project. Wait, things are going right now. That's why we're trying to jump on this. That would be just making sure.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you for your thorough.
Sorry for jumping into the weeds on.
I love the weeds. You're good at the weeds for me.
Was this the same company that did the unit at Marlowe?
Correct.
So just, I need to stay with me. Did we have issue with AC at Marlowe of the maintenance grid due to the lightning? The lightning, okay. I was going to ask about their customer service tool, like if they had to come out. Did we have a good experience with them, where their warranty were? But I got the call. It was lightning.
Right. That's it. In fact, then, this was our control company, who really helped out with getting that corrected in less than 24 hours.
Okay.
And as far as the installation, the work that the company did, great craftsmanship.
That was one of our questions. Yep. This is what'd be our fourth or fifth project we've done with this company, most recently the pillar replacement at the high school, which is one of, pretty good, right, there, Mr. Linkless?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Any objections from the committee would move in this forward then? There aren't any objections. I think that closes out for Building your grounds. What's the placement policy?
Thank you, Mr. Troy. So yes, so tonight we have 10.1, which is our semi-annual review of closed meeting minutes. Mr. Bumber, do you want to?
Yeah. So this is kind of looking at the process. We've had some discussions. It's the semi-annual review of closed sessions. Basically, we have some minutes that we will be going in and discussing this closed session, improving all of those pieces. But wanting to take a look at what is the process for that. And so at your test area there is kind of a draft proposal of what that procedural would look like, so that we can streamline some things, making sure that we have consistency in what that process looks like as individual changes, the board changes. Again, this is a procedure exhibit, so this would be fluid and can be updated. But based on some discussions that we've had, we wanted to put some of those thoughts into procedure and paper to discuss here. So this would be proposal. We've been putting it in, in that exhibit and procedure format. But that had to go over annually. We know we do this twice to review all closed session minutes as required by OMA. And the purpose is to review whether or not there's confidentiality that still remains. So part of that process, the board president, the board secretary, or designee shall review the written closed session minutes since the last semi-annual review. Together, they'll prepare written recommendations identifying these should remain closed, or these shall be open. There's no longer confidentiality treatment and may be released. We did have some discussion of two individuals sitting down. If there was some discrepancy or disagreement on where does it lie, what would, what would that look like? So putting a recommendation that if the board president, board secretary may disagree on the recommendations, both perspectives would be presented to the board in writing along with a rationale for each. And then the board in a closed session would review that, majority vote, whether or not the minute should remain confidential or be released. And then we've had discussion about what kinds of things remain closed. So part of this process is that our executive secretary recording, secretary would go ahead and put together a sheet for these two individuals to look at. And so part of that, a PhD could go ahead and look at this list to say this falls under A, this falls under C, and so on and so forth. So that when those would be reviewed, you'd have kind of that guideline. But so some of the confidentiality categories based on feedback would be matters involving ongoing or anticipated litigation where disclosure could prejudice the district's legal position, discussions regarding individual students, staff or employees protected under FERPA, personnel privacy laws, or other confidentiality statutes, security procedures, school safety planning, and other sensitive information where disclosure would reasonably jeopardize the safety of our students, staff at our facilities, collective litigation matters that have not been fully resolved, or that could compromise the district's bargaining position, purchase of property, superintendent review. From there, again, the board would meet in closed session, review the recommendations for the two individuals, to determine by majority vote whether the confidentiality still sits or sits forward. The board determination shall document an open session minutes of the meeting at which the semi-annual review is conducted. And closed session verbatim recordings shall be destroyed in less than 18 months after the completion of closed session minutes recorded, provided that the board has approved the destruction and the written minutes of the meeting have been approved and retained. So just taking a lot of these processes, putting it in to some procedures that we can review as decisions are being made. So looking at that, we had a few discussions, but wanted to kind of memorialize, put a draft together for discussion to see if we could move forward on that process.
Anybody have any questions before?
I think the only thing that I maybe want to address is that we're not locked into the board president and the board secretary. I know that's what the Illinois Association of the School Boards recommends. That's kind of their guideline. But I do think it is important, having seen, having been through the meeting minutes, we did, I think it's important for board members to know what's in there, you know, and have that backup plan, like six months, we're doing this again. If I'm for whatever reason physically unable to come in, because it has to be done here, that somebody else can, you know, do this in my place. That this is like an exclusive only for officers of the debt. Somebody else should be able to review these and make decisions and recommendations to bring back to the rest of the board.
I could change it. We're, you know, I have order designee in here just after the board secretary, but that could be just in general and close.
Yeah. I want to give everybody an opportunity to have that, that, that safety and that opportunity to just look at the meeting minutes and give their feedback.
So any board member can look at minutes at any time. That's really not the issue. The question is, whose responsibility is it to do the semi-annual review? And I do like the approach of having a third party or a third person in the event that one of the two cannot do it. I think that's a good recommendation to have. But as far as the review, I think there's a reason for that they have those two people do the review before presenting it to the rest of the board. There's nothing that stops anybody from looking at the, anyway.
Right.
It's just a matter of the release responsibility.
I believe that process is outlined in policy two, code two 20, so they could, if there were reasons that somebody would need to or want to.
Right. It's in the event, having that safety and that backup plan. And I have, you know, definitely that continuity and that consistency. But again, the president and secretary could change every two years.
Well, they can do change.
Yeah.
Nope. Anybody ask them any questions?
Just one thing. I mean, are we, are we really looking to ask for, because I think the rule is that the board reviews the closed session minutes. Our process says we're going to shrink that down to the board president and the secretary. Should we say at least the board secretary and the board president? So if someone else wanted to review them, they could insert themselves into that. Because we're saying that they can go visit it, but they also have a right to kind of have a voice on that. Is that really what we're kind of looking to add?
Well, I'm wondering if that's in number three. Maybe not. And maybe we could be a little bit more clear. That after that, the board then shall meet in closed session to review those recommendations. And I don't know if that, so that if the two individuals, and they would bring that, and these would be released, these would stay the same because. So that would all, all that rationale is kind of in number three. But maybe I'm not saying it as clearly. So it says that after that review is done, they would bring that to, the board would meet in closed session to review all of those recommendations and determine, determine by majority vote whether the need for confidentiality still exists. So right now, I believe it's just the two, correct?
Yeah. I think what we're saying is at a minimum.
Minimum.
It's those two.
Yes. But the whole process includes everyone. So if there's three that we're, you know, we're bringing forth to look at, everybody should read through those three minutes, and then we should have the majority voted to whether or not everybody is comfortable with releasing it or not.
And that would be a present discrepancy, right?
Yeah. But even, even if there's, so let's say there's not a discrepancy. Paul and I are doing this right now. There's, you know, there's two of them that were like, yep, we want, we think we should release these. In order for the full board to vote and say, yes, we're going to release this, the board would have to know what they're releasing for. Right? So that's, okay, so that's what we're saying is in closed session, board members would also look through those meeting minutes, and then we would come into open session and vote, correct?
All of them? Well, I think that's, there you have the discussion you guys need to have, because if that's the case, I know how many hours that takes for everybody to read all of those every six months.
No, not all of them. I'm saying, we've got hypothetically three. Those who are three that we're looking to vote on, we would bring those, and everybody on the board would read those three meeting minutes. Those, and then we would come up and vote.
But it's still the officer's job to act as the first filter?
Yes.
And then the second level of filtering is bring the recommendations forward to the team?
Yes.
And then the team views them and says, yes, we, we concur to release, or we concur not to release. And out of the seven people who are there, or whatever the majority is of attendees that evening, then that's the decision whether to release or not. So there's still a first tier of filtering, and then the second tier of deciding to release or not release. Is that what I'm?
Yes.
Okay. Because for a moment there, it made it sound like everybody was going to do the review.
No, 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 no. Sorry. If I came out that way, that's not how I meant that to be. I meant specifically the ones that we are considering a draft, releasing at that six-month period. But, you know, to the disturbance point, if somebody else wants to say, hey, I, I want to flip through these two, and maybe say, hey, you know, Mr. President, Mr. Secretary, please have you, have you considered this one as well? I mean, there's nothing to stop any board member from looking at the closed session, the meeting minutes, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. The way I look at it is we're delegating this responsibility to the secretary and the board president. And we trust that you guys will make a reasonable review on what can happen. And then we will take your recommendation. If you both agree, we're going to move forward. We don't have to, but we're likely going to move forward, right? Suppose we could challenge it, or why we would. But, and if someone wanted to insert themselves in and say, I want to be a third voice, they could. Because it is the whole board responsibility to review this.
Correct. And I think that then those criteria, those categories will help that process to be able to limit the number of disagreements that maybe are out there. I'm good.
All right. Thank you for communicating relations. We've done number 12. We did that earlier. Is there anything for public comment number 13?
Wait, wait, eleven.
I want to say something.
Did we miss one? Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. I'm so sorry.
I'm moving into Mr. Murray.
No.
I've got another sports car. But no, I wanted to just. I've got another sports tour, but, no, I wanted to just mention, welcome Nico and Emma. And congratulations. I know the whole process of getting, you know, interviewing the applicants that came out. And I wanted to say thanks to all of them, because it was, it was such an honor to chat with you guys. And, I mean, we spent a long, it was a long night for all of us. But it was wonderful, and it was so worth it. It was really enjoyable to get to know everybody, so, so thank you for being here. I wanted to say that. The whole entire process was, I think it was great. And it, and it was really a tough decision, you know. And so, I mean, we just had very bright students come forward, and it was just really exceptional to watch. It was an honor to be a part of that decision-making. So, and then I wanted to mention, I attended the breakfast of champions yesterday. And that was really special. I'm not, my son was a part of that. He was being recognized, and I was like, wow, this is, I hadn't, I didn't know much about it, so, unfortunately. But I got to see it firsthand, and it was, it went really well, and it was really special. And I just want to say thanks to everybody that put that off, put that on, rather. And, yeah, it was really special and really neat, so. But other than that, I didn't have anything, but I wanted to mention those things, so thank you.
Can I ask the students to share, it's homecoming week. So this kind of falls under community, right? What has homecoming week consisted of?
For me, homecoming week is a lot of craziness and a lot of early meetings, lots of late nights, and a little more shuttles, just because I'm hard to deal with. But what I will say from the student's perspective is that I think it's been really exciting. I think seeing everyone dressing up, the spirit days has been great. I think the energy is different, and that I think it really feels like a special time of the year and that everyone comes together. The parade was wonderful. There was no major issues. Everyone had a great time. And this entire week's been going great. And I think we have a lot of exciting events. We have the pep rally tomorrow. We have the game versus Prairie Ridge alumni event, and then the dance on Saturday. So I think there's a lot of exciting things going on, and it's just been a great time of the year.
All right, it's been a fun week for me, too. On Sunday's homecoming period, I walked with across country. That was fun. I wouldn't have been doing it for this year, but I'm really excited for the dance and everything. It's always fun, but that's all I got.
Final tip.
Sorry, I apologize for that.
There's the mic on. I apologize for that.
It's okay.
Thank you for catching it. Item eleven done. Item twelve, we covered earlier, as I mentioned. Item thirteen, will return anything these last minutes public comments turn?
All right, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, item fourteen. I move that the board move into closed session at eight fifty-four P.M. as indicated in the Open Meetings Act and five I.L.P.S. one twenty slash two C. For the discussion of appointment, employment, discipline, performance, or disciplinary specific employees or legal counsel due disciplinary matters relating to individual student litigation, discussion of minutes of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act period.
Second.
Okay. All right, the second for Mr. Craddy. Have a roll call, look, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bimmin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
We have a motion passed at seven zero. With that, we're in closed session, unless there's something else?
Yeah, right before we all go down to closed session, because of our thing, we get a photo with the board and the two of them together, remember? Is there a, there a message to that?